Okay.
I don't know what matters, but I'm just trying to get it on.
Calling to order, Parowan City Council meeting for December eighth, twenty twenty two. It is six o'clock P M. Thank you to all of you for coming out tonight. We always appreciate you being here. Um, we are going to start with an opening prayer and pledge by Seth, Fathering Ham. Fathering Ham.
Got it.
Okay.
Our dear heavenly father, we're very grateful to be here in this city council meeting to be able to discuss the needs of the town and to have the community here in support. We're very grateful for our leaders and we pray that they can be guided and directed in all the decisions that they make and are placed before them. We're very grateful for our country and for our freedoms. And we ask that we can make the decisions to continue to have those freedoms and to have the blessings that we do in our life and in our community. We are grateful for thee and all that thou gives us and we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Do we have any conflicts with the agenda by any of the members of city council?
No.
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 Okay, and I just realized we need to have David Burton on the phone.
He's on the phone.
So did he?
Dave, do you want to say hi?
Oh, hi. Thank you for letting me join, but I don't have any conflict. Thank you.
Okay. And then in looking at the agenda for this evening, we do need to remove one item from the agenda. Um, there is a, uh, hard surface ordinance and the planning and zoning committee is not quite ready to present that in the work meeting tonight. So that will happen in January. So with the, with that changed, do we have any other changes to the agenda?
No.
And then I would entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve this meeting's agenda, um, with taking out number eighteen, hard surface definition.
I'll submit. It's nineteen. Is it nineteen on yours?
It's on eighteen on mine.
Oh, I have an updated, okay.
Just kidding.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. David, did you answer? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Um, now we have time for public comment and this is a time for you, um, any of the audience that would like to come up and speak on any of the items that are not on this evening's agenda. Your comments are limited to two minutes per person. I'm always so surprised and then I'm wondering if somebody waiting to see if they're really going to get up. So, doesn't look like anyone's even blinking. All right, so we'll move on. Moving on to the consent meeting, these are items which are usually require no further discussion and are routine in nature. All items on the consent agenda are usually adopted by a single motion. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent meeting agenda six through nine.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have one question on it, uh, Dan.
You can, you think everybody can hear you, so just...
Address the mayor, you're good.
Okay, mayor, I have one question on the, uh, the warrant register. There was a payment to Rosenberg, the engineering for nine hundred and sixty-five dollars for, uh, let's see, Matthew Kemp, a model review for plant, planning and zoning. I just wanted a clarification on that, what that was, what that was for, 'cause I was a little...
What page is that on, David?
It's on, uh...
Did, did you hear me, Dan? I can't...
Yeah, yeah, we're looking it up right now to see the detail.
What's it, under Bowens?
Okay, Councilman Burton, we have Heather Shortliff approaching, so I think she'll be able to answer that question.
It's on page eleven, Rosenberg Associates, uh, reference number three, six, four, nine, nine, invoice two, eight, six, eight, five. They send out, or it was invoice on nine, nineteen, and it was paid on twelve, six, for nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Okay, that check was a reissued check. They did not receive it, so we put a stop payment on it and we just reissued it. That's why...
Okay, I can't really hear, I'm sorry. So if somebody could just explain...
So Heather said that it was a reissued check, they never got the original one, so they did a, um, um, a stop payment and reissued a check. This is from an earlier payment.
Okay, and that was to Rosenberg for their evaluation of the...
It's a invoice.
Uh, review of that, um, model, correct?
Yeah, Rosenberg is the contracted city, um, engineer. When we, we use them for small little projects, um, review, site review plans, plat review, things like that. And so this must have been an earlier one that was done, but this was a reissue of an earlier check.
Okay, 'cause I, okay, 'cause it just looked like a new, the city didn't have any projects and I knew there was, that was an individual construction, so it was just a concern.
All right, I think we have a vote on the table, other than David, if you approve.
Okay, thank you.
So, are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move into the action meeting. These are the items on the agenda that do require, um, council discussion and vote. Um, we are starting with item number eleven. This is crosswalks and children cross around the school perimeter, neighborhood streets. And we have, um, Matt and Kenzie Dykes here and they are going to come and address their concerns. And then following their concerns, we have our police chief here to answer to those and to talk about some things that are in place and coming.
This isn't high school, so Shortliff can't kick me out of this, thankfully.
Watch me.
Although Heather never kicked me out, actually, because I was a good student.
No one will kick you out of here.
If you could speak into the mic, that way...
Is it on?
Is it on? Can you hear me?
Yeah, that way Councilman Burton can hear you.
Perfect. Um, yeah, so I'm Kenzie Dykes, this is my husband, Matt, um, and we just wanted to bring to attention some concerns we have with the crosswalks. Specifically, um, my main concern is one on one hundred north. Our, our seven-year-old son almost was hit by a car and, um, I'm a little shook up by it, if you can't tell. Nothing happened, thankfully, but it was a young gal from the high school, didn't even see him, didn't break nothing at all, and there was no crossguard present. So, um, and I had noticed prior that there hadn't been a cross, a crossguard for a while and for a little bit after there wasn't. So I called the school and said, why isn't there a crossguard, um, on this, on the street? And they said that it is a city, um, it's provided by the city, so that's why we're here. Um, and we, there has been one since, both on Main Street and on one hundred north, we've noticed, which is fantastic. That's what we love to see. But, um, we just want to see some extra precautions go into place on these streets to ensure that our children are the safest they can possibly be. Um, and there's, there's a couple of ideas that we have come up with and talked about. Um, I don't think it needs to be outrageously expensive. I think some simple things. Um, on Main Street, there is the flashing school zone sign that shows the speed limit. Um, I think something as simple as that would really help on one hundred north as well. Um, there's also, um, my mom, if you didn't know, I'm Diane Lister's daughter. She was on city council one from time to time.
Don't say that too loud.
Um, she graciously ordered this for us. It's a solar-powered flashing light. There are so many cost-effective options that we could put to, to at least have it known that this is a school zone. I mean, you, people should know, it's the elementary's right there, but it seems to still be a recurring issue that people just aren't slowing down on that street. Um, also, another idea we had in mind was, um, maybe carry flags on both sides of the street where there's bucket on each side. The kid can hold a flag up, walk, walk across the street, put it back in the other side. Um, and especially like even on game nights by the Dairy Freeze crosswalk, that's really dark and not well lit and hard to notice. So something like that might be a really great option there as well on, you know, game nights for the high school and whatnot. Um, and I, we would love as parents to raise money for these things, to help out in any way that we can. I'm not coming here asking to put it all on you guys. We would be happy to do stuff as a community and as parents to help raise money for different things, but, um...
I think I'm, I think, uh, the reason that I'm the most upset, um, is the fact that the, my son was almost killed. I mean, when the video was reviewed, he, literally the car came inches from running him over. And this car didn't break, nothing. And none of us parents were notified by you guys that there's no crossing guards. I, I sat there for weeks without a crossing guard, watching kids almost get plowed over. And a lot of people in the school area like their speed. I don't know why, especially through the elementary. So, my question would be, why weren't parents notified that there's no crossing guards?
So, my question would be, why weren't your...
Oh, that's that re, that's that repeat thing that happened.
Whoever wants to answer it. Why weren't the parents notified about not being a crossing guard?
It was under my impression that there, we've always had a crossing guard there, like...
Which, which?
Right by the elementary.
One that goes a, a hundred, uh, west? Hundred, hundred west, hundred north. I thought we always did.
We do have one there, that's why I'm surprised.
There, I would go to pick up every day and there, there was probably a good month's stint where there was not a consistent crossing guard, at least, and I'm, I'm not...
I, I know it was...
In the morning and the afternoon, or just in the afternoon?
Um, mainly, mainly afternoon. I do know Ruthie was there and then going to Main Street. So there was one at, one or the other, and...
Well, she's, she's brand new at it, doing it.
Yeah, but there was never consistently one at, well, not never, that's, sorry, that's a, that's a broad statement, but, um, at least for during that time. This was probably late October, mom, was this?
This is the last, the last of October. This is the Friday of, before Halloween.
Yeah, so, I, I, I don't, I don't know. I hope, that, that's just my hope, is that there's one in place. And I would love to see precautions that if, if one is sick or one is on vacation or one is out. I have noticed Officer Towns in there and I, I appreciate that so much. And I just hope to see a plan in place that there would be one consistently there and then a plan in place that if that person is gone, that one is covered. Or even communication between the city and the school, hey, can you send out a text to the parents that there isn't a crossguard today? So parents, please go and pick up your kids, like maybe walk over and get them, 'cause my son knows. That was the issue with this incident. He knows not to cross the road without a crossguard. My niece had happened to walk with him that day and she's fourteen and didn't realize she needed to hold his hand. So she was ahead of him when this incident almost occurred. Um, but yeah, I would just, I would love to see a plan in place that, hey, I'm sick today, I can't make it to the crosswalk. Do we have backup? Is Officer Towns in that backup consistently?
Yeah, and there was comments that, um, it costs too much to get, um, to get some blinking lights or, and I talked to the mayor about this. Um, I'm telling you, if my son would have been ran over, it would have been a lot more cost, costly. I'm just telling you that. So, um, I would appreciate as a parent, like if you don't have crossing guards, like send out a text. I'll, I'll be glad to go up to the school and, and give my, and volunteer my time. I don't really care, I just want the kids, um, to be safe.
Yeah, yeah, is that, if, if that's an option too, in the case of an absence, can a parent, like I would gladly go volunteer to walk kids across the street as well.
So is this something that we need to talk to the chief about too? Because I think, does the crossing guards run through the police department's office or, like who deals with that? Because I personally don't know who's in charge of. I know that the city is supplying the crossing guards, but I don't know who's in charge of making sure that there is one there.
It's the city that...
Well, but is it the city office or is it the police department? That's just what I'm asking, is like who is ultimately in charge of making sure that they're there?
I, I know Jed runs, uh, he, he's, he oversees the crossing guards, um, but I'm not, I mean, I know it's a city issue because...
And I wasn't necessarily thinking that you would have the answer, I was more looking to us, us up here.
And, and maybe we could have a, a list of when someone doesn't show up or that, they can call who's on standby.
Yeah, like a backup list of parents who are happy to go volunteer in the event, you know, like, yeah, I would gladly, gladly step in and do that anytime.
I think that would be a good idea, to have a list.
So I think let's, I don't know if Chief Adams has any comments on this. I mean, who's in...
I don't, I don't know if Jed is officially...
You can come up if you'd like to come to the microphone.
Um, I don't know that Jed's in charge of anything like that. He, officially, he's not at all.
So who is in charge of hiring, is that the city office is in charge of hiring the crossing guards?
I've, I've never had anything to do with that in the, over three years I've been here.
Okay, so then I guess we just need to find out who is ultimately responsible for making sure that they're showing up. No, it's not.
No, it's definitely the city.
It's not. It's the city.
It's the city.
The school district is not in charge of the crossing. Some of those people may work for the school district, so it makes it easier for them to come over, but they're not responsible for them. Like the city, yeah, the city employs and pays the crossing guards.
So, does that fall under you, Dan, or me, or...
No.
Yeah, I've been, been waiting for a minute and I, I apologize to everybody...
Sorry.
No, you're fine. I don't have much of a voice tonight. I got a few things to say through the meeting, so I'm going to try to conserve my words. Um, I don't know exactly who's in charge and what the backup list is, but I promise that by the next meeting, we'll not only have solved the problem, but have a report for it. So we'll get down, we'll, to the bottom of it, we'll make sure that public safety is definitely aware. Um, whether or not it, it rides on myself, whether it rides on public safety, we definitely need chain of command. We need to know if, it's not like missing a, you know, a, a lesson and somebody else says, okay, I'll teach a lesson in, in your church. This is like real public safety stuff. If, if somebody's going to call in sick, we need to have a list of subs that they can call, even if it's a volunteer sub. These are paid positions, they don't get paid a lot, very little. They, usually it's a labor of love that they do crossing guard work, but they do get paid by the city. So we'll make sure that, that there's a good, good system in place and I'll report back on it. I just don't know myself what it is.
It'd be a good idea to get the P T O involved, maybe, and see if we can come up with a backup list like that, because...
Yeah.
Sometimes we just do not know. And then, like, at, at certain times, there may only be one person working in Parowan in public safety and they might be...
Well, they can't be public safety. If you go on a call...
Well, if I'm in the jail, I'm a long ways away.
Sure.
I'm in the hospital, I'm a long ways away.
So when I, prior life, I was at a different city. I was actually the treasurer and finance director there, ten years ago. As, like, there was a pecking order and there was, I think it was the building inspector's job, and when he couldn't do it, there was somebody else. The reason I know is I was on the pecking list, the pecking order list. If this person was gone, that person was sick, I grabbed a jacket, didn't know what I was doing, but I had a stop sign in my hand and I stopped cars. And it was awkward when kids would want to give me a hug and I'm like, is this okay? But that never failed to happen, even if it was the, the, the nerdy accountant out there doing it. So we need a system like that, that there is, so that we don't not have something.
But also a place where that person is sick or call and fi, and let them know, you know, I think that's...
Well, that's, that's their, that's part of their job.
There's always...
They're not going to show up, they've got to call in. If that doesn't happen, they get written up. And, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's just important. There's no, there's no way about, no other two ways around it.
Do they have cross, crossing guards down on two hundred and one hundred?
So two hundred west?
And then down on two hundred, where it goes down on...
So there are two crossing guards for the school. One is one hundred north and one hundred west, or two hundred west, one hundred west.
One hundred west.
And then the other one is one hundred north Main Street.
Main Street.
Okay, so there's not any on...
And this is, like, we are the only school in Iron County that has two crossing guards. There's not another school in Iron County that has more than one crossing guard. Enic has zero. Um, they're on a busy road as well. Sorry, they do, they have their public, uh, works person doing it when they can. Um, it's, it's Three Peaks that has zero on Mid Valley Road. There's Canyon View, the middle school, Canyon View, Cedar Middle School, Cedar High School. There are none at any of those. The big concern is, is your kid's age, right? Um, which I agree, and I want to keep them safe. Wha, I mean, we, we have two crossing guards for a school of four hundred. Is that right? The gra, the elementary school has four hundred kids? That's... Okay, I, I was just reading the Santa Flight thing today, it was saying four hundred, so I'm guessing. I'm going by what the newspaper says. Um, and I know, I know that's, I, I feel like we're real, we're trying, I didn't know about October not having coverage. Um, we, we didn't have coverage anywhere in October. It was a rough month for sure. But I, I've, I've taken a sign, I've gone and done crossing duty at both, at both areas, um, in the last three years several times. I just, we have to know about it and if we don't know, it's hard to be everywhere.
Well, and furthermore, um, I would like to, and maybe, maybe we put a committee together. Um, it's easy to just say, you know, Main Street's UDOT's problem, but as I look at it, I can see some of the signs are fairly faded, barely yellow. Um, that's an easy fix. The, uh, we had a problem where when you'd push the light, it was only turning on in one direction. Um, I called UDOT, they sent their guy out and he said, yep, the battery's in the system, we're, we're down. They just need to be, and so now it flashes in both directions, which you need traffic to stop in both directions if you're going to cross a road like that. But I think we need to do a review. Let's, let's, let's do a, a field trip, let's walk around, let's look at it, let's, let's see what UDOT is willing to do. Um, we, 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 we definitely need to review it, 'cause this has come up several times since I've been here and I've only been here a short time.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, that's my thought, mayor. I don't know, council, what you think about that, but signs are cheap. Um, flashing overhead signs are very expensive, but, you know, we can look at it, we can come up with some sort of suggestions, maybe a recommendation, budget.
I, I would like to get it like a hard number on those signs, I mean, something simple on that one hundred, uh, north, you know, if they're flashing lights. Or let's, let's look a hard number on that.
Okay, well, I mean, but, but there's a million options. You know what I'm saying? I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I think it just needs to be something, you know, it could be something simple. There you go.
Well, that's what I was just thinking.
Part, part of...
Done at most, at most crosswalks, that's done, and we have cones.
Well, but...
We could have in there.
I mean, even the crosswalk right there in front of Dairy, Dairy Freeze.
Sure.
I mean, there's cars that do not stop for the kids. They don't.
Well, maybe that's part of the crossing guard's job is not only manning, not only manning your spot, but you go set up one of those signs in the middle of the road, in the turning lane, and then you go man your area. And if both of them were to do that at the key places, and then when they're done, they take them back, put them in the truck and go.
They used to do it, uh, before they got the lights S U there on three hundred, uh, but they used to put a sign, just a folding sign, right in the middle of the road.
Right.
Yeah, I think, uh, something simple like that.
That'd be cheap.
I mean, we need to, you know, I think that would be an eye catcher, at least slow them down or watch or, um, stuff like that.
We have to protect our kids.
I think that's an easy, I think that's an easy fix.
Well, Jed, Jed will turn his lights on, even not flashing, just the solid red and blue in the morning. I come in every morning while those, while they're in the middle of crossing and, and that is powerful. And it's the little things like that, because, I mean, nobody's going to ever hit a kid on purpose. And, but all it takes is just looking down at a text, forgetting what time of day it is, and now you have this bad accident. So anything you can do to just top of mind awareness, um, especially those that are traveling through that aren't familiar with Parowan, um, that may not even realize it's a school zone. I just think we need to do a review of everything we have.
But I think we need to have somebody there now. We need to make sure that there's a crossing guard there now.
I'm sure there is.
There is one now.
There are, like I, well, I see them in the morning.
Twice a day at both.
What I'm saying is, while we're doing the review, we need to make sure that we...
Oh, yeah.
Twice, twice a day at both places.
No doubt.
So on the one hundred north, you're talking one hundred north, one hundred west.
Right.
Yeah.
Because both of them are one hundred north, just one's one hundred north Main.
That's a management, yeah.
One's one hundred north, one hundred west. Both of them have crossing guards twice a day.
Yeah.
You can put me on the list, if you let me yell at the kids, I'll go out there and...
You can yell at anybody you want.
New drivers. And they're new drivers, mhm.
But I'm serious, if you need somebody, I'll go out there.
So, so part of this, as the chief will tell you, is, is education, not just of the public, but of the kids. Sure.
Is, is, is that, we've got the high school kids right here.
That's what I was, I was just asking.
Yeah, Dorothy Dunlap, step up to the microphone. Aren't you your school president?
Um, so we do have, we do it every now and then, we have our, uh, driver's ed teacher. He comes and holds just your little daily reminders on the announcements. He comes in maybe two or three times a week, but I think on announcements, especially 'cause we're in charge of them, we can put some more reminders on there. It's just like, hey, guys, this isn't just high school, like you've got to make sure there's little kids here. So we'll kind of, we'll try and manage that a little bit better too, so.
Thank you, that would be great.
And to Jim's point, we don't need to wait till the end of some committee to recommend that we manage our current crossing guards and make sure that there's not a hole. That I can do immediately. But I think when I say a committee, let's look at our signs, let's look what's available and let's come up with a recommendation and do it.
Absolutely.
And chief, I'm, I'm home most of the time too, so you can call me if we, if we need it. I won't yell.
That's all right, I'll teach you.
You don't want to make it too scary, then they'll cross elsewhere.
Do we make sure we have a follow-up on this, on at least next council or something?
Not till January.
Well, still-
Yeah, he said that he would have a follow-up by then.
I'll shoot you an email.
Thank you.
Okay, cause it is important. We do.
Thank you so much for coming and bringing us to City Council. It's really important and it's- it's great that you would come out and- and kinda give us that firsthand experience for us to really get a picture of what we need to focus on. Thank you. All right, moving now to action meeting item number-
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, oh, we need to vote.
We need to- there needs to be a resolution.
Okay, so, I would entertain a motion, um, do you have one in mind?
Uh, our move that we establish a committee headed by city manager to ensure that we have crossing guards at the- the school crossings and form a committee made a- made up of members of the community and member of the city council to investigate financing for lights or cones or whatever safety measures are necessary.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Who wants to be on the committee?
I will.
I will.
I will.
Don't matter.
Like, we all will.
Hey.
There you go, you already-
Kelly, you wrote, like, half the room raised their hand, we'll- we'll- we'll call and ask if people, the mayor's really good.
I'll be the crossing guard and Matt can be on the committee.
I gotta tell ya, that was- I was a little reticent to do that job at one point, but it was one of my favorite things, I loved it when I- when I- when I got called on to do it. Those little kids just bright, bright day.
Crossing guard's not gonna be that big a deal.
Yeah.
I understand, any of those kinda things are. When I finish cleaning the toilets at the senior center, I can just stop by and grab the sign and-
Give you a brush at home.
Callie has something to say, she probably has the answer to this question.
For those of you who've raised your hand tonight, if you just wanna make sure you put a star by your name on the sign-in sheet, then we'll know that- that- that you are interested in doing that.
And we- we don't, we wouldn't need to keep a committee manageable, but, yeah, that would be great.
Or you can email me, my email's callie, C-A-L-L-I-E, at parowan.org. Thank you.
Callie, it seems like it was around nine bucks an hour, ten seventy-four, but you're not getting eighty hours a week of pay period, I mean, it's, yeah.
So, we have- we currently have four crossing guards, um, and they are scheduled, they have their scheduled times. Um, uh, if they work thirty minutes, you get paid an hour, since it is not very much money. We have one crossing guard who only works two hours a week. So, um, so far, as far as I'm aware, the- all of the shifts are being covered. Um, but, you're right, we do need some backup. Even if they were to call another of the guards that, you know, is working, not that shift, but could work that shift and it, you know, that would work out too. But, anyway, we do have four and it is ten seventy-four an hour. And if you wanna be paid, then you gotta come fill out paperwork, so.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, moving to action meeting item number eleven, it's ATV trail to Bryanhead and that is going to be presented by our city manager, Dan Justin.
Callie, can you bring that image up? So, this predates me, um, and this is something the city is tangentially involved with, but not- it's not the city's project. Um, Mike Werthen from the county's natural resource, he's the county's natural resource manager, has been all across Iron County, um, doing designated ATV, um, trails and had identified and been working with Bryanhead and Parowan about creating a route up the canyon and had got a grant, I believe, from the state to- to do signage and really just needed the thumbs up or the cooperation from Bryanhead and Parowan. The majority of this trail is not inside the city proper, although the city boundaries do go up the canyon, of course. Um, you can see on the map, the designated trail route that Mike had identified and I'm not sure where the holdup was originally, but, um, Brett Hauser from Parowan, or Bryan- Bryanhead reached out recently and said, "The signs are- are built, they're made, really, we just need to install them, what is the hangup?" And so, um, we looked at it internally, um, and as far as, I mean, I'll describe the route as it impacts, um, Parowan City, um, and some of the questions that were raised internally and, um, what the answers were. So, you probably can't zoom in, but it starts, or maybe you can. If you could just zoom in by right there where it starts at the mouth of the canyon, a little bit. Um, basically, the trail will be on the west side of the road. Um, there's already existing trails, there's no- there's not a creation of a new trail, but there's a trail on the west side of the road, goes up by the Frisbee Golf, crosses down through the- the wash and goes up, there's one point, it crosses over the freeway, sorry, the highway, and- and jumps to the other side, to the east side of the road, in fact, the east side of, um, the Parowan crick- creek. Do we call it a creek or is it a river, what is it? Parowan River. I like to call things a creek, I'm a Southern Utah guy. Um, the one area that it really kind of impacts the city the most is where the trail, if you could think Forbay and that- that existing trail that's there comes right up and along the Forbay. And so, um, this was a potential problem. Um, K- uh, Kelly was consulted, um, and- and he originally asked, um, in fact, I have Kelly's text, um, if- if we could make sure that, um, that it was well signed and that, um, cars and trucks couldn't drive down it, but just ATVs. Um, and, um, Mike Werthen said that he would sign it very well, but he- Kelly wanted to put in some type of a gate system that would only allow side-by-sides, the problem is side-by-sides are getting so big now, you know, you could put a Suzuki Samurai down and stuff, you couldn't get a certain size, side-by-side down. So, um, Mike didn't respond to all of that, but he came back with a signage plan that Kelly said he could support. Um, I asked Kelly if he was gonna be here tonight and he is at the doctor in St. George. I don't wanna go into any more detail, I probably shouldn't even said that. But, Kelly said, "I'm good with the trails, I talked to Mike about putting a sign just off the Yankee Road and he said he would do it and he's good with it." So, um, that's as much as I know with the involvement that I've had with it. Um, I- I know the mayor's been involved a little bit longer and I don't know if anybody else on the council has been involved, but that's my report.
What actions required of us then, Dan?
From- oh, by the way, from that point on, from the Forbay on, the trail is the highway. That's the designated trail.
Wow. So, you just need our support?
Uh, the only thing that they don't have that- that I'm requiring is city council approval. Um, they said, "We don't know where this got," you know, it's been being talked about for quite some time, but their, um, comparison was the ball just didn't quite make it over the goal- the goal line and so, um, and I said, "Well, let me put it on our agenda and we'll talk about it with city council" and, um, so, I would just be, I guess, looking for your position on it, because we need to decide.
I think my only concern is, is after the Forbay, they're on the highway with all of the other cars.
So, this is what Mike said, "In order to travel on state highways, the state mandates that all ATVs and side-by-sides be street legal." And as of the first of next year, sorry, Chief, I think I'm gonna steal a little bit of your thunder, they are requiring all ATV and side-by-sides to be registered and licensed anyways. In fact, they're requiring a, um, anybody who is driving an ATV or a side-by-side to actually go online and print off a, um, I'm sure the chief can tell us about it, I'm not a hundred percent sure, print off a document that says that you've gone in and been educated and printed off, I think, Hunter Safety. That's a new law that the legislature passed.
You wanna step up and talk about that?
Yeah, if you could talk about it, that'd be great. Are we jumping ahead on the agenda or not?
Nope.
No, it was a question I had.
Okay.
Okay, so it's a new House bill, one eighty, um, it's gonna go into effect January first. It'll be enforceable in February. It'll require anybody operating an ATV to complete an online education course. It'll take about fifteen minutes to complete it. Um, anybody that's under eighteen and does not have a driver's license will have to also complete a skills course, um, and to carry a- a certification that way. Um, it- it, every ATV- every new ATV registration and every re-registration will be issued an actual license plate, instead of just the stickers that fall off or wear off. Um, that- that all goes into effect in January. There's- there's some other enforcement to us. Um, some of the problems with ATV use is going across other properties, leaving gates open on farm roads or whatever. Some of those are gonna be enforceable now with community service hours. Um, I don't know who's gonna oversee all that, but it's gonna be in place in the state law, so. Um, it's probably a real- a good step if we're gonna have something like this, it's probably gonna help. Um, it'll take- it'll take a learning curve, it'll take some time.
And that's part of your plan in the police department, you'll have an education period where you're given warnings and- and letting people know they're driving-
When we give a warning, it's documented, the next time we stop that person and pull their license up, we'll be able to look into their history with us, as long as we have service, um, and see whether they've been given a warning and then our poli- our directive at that point is gonna be, use your discretion, um, if you feel like it's a- it's a time for a ticket, give them a ticket.
Who- who gives the classes on this, is it-
Online.
But, I mean, you have to have a skills class, who does?
Skills course, that's gonna be by the state, so, I'm- I'm, I believe it's gonna be either, uh, through the DNR, um, 'cause that's- it's their bill, it's just not quite in place yet for the under eighteens that are not driver's licensed.
But, they would still, if they have a driver's license, do they still have to have a license here?
If they're under eighteen but they have a driver's license, they don't, they just still have to do the fifteen minute online course. Yeah. I think it'll be really simpler, similar to the shed hunting course or if you're hunting black bear in the spring, you have to take a online course to show that you can differentiate between types of bears. There- there's several courses like that, a little less involved than, you know, a- a driving course or Hunter Safety course, but it'll be something. Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
That's another assignment for our student body president, share that with, uh, with the kids too.
She's like, "I'm never coming again."
Now, are they at this time not asking for any money or anything like that, or just basically support, yea or nay from the councils out there?
There isn't any funding needing- needed, so it would just be a motion to approve the proposed trail and installation of signage.
Yeah, so, everything is funded by the state through the county, so we give them a thumbs up.
This is the same one type of thing that they had out west and-
Yeah, he's been, Mike has been putting eight designated ATV trails, um-
All over in-
All over Iron County.
Yeah.
And- and- and the chief is right, I mean, there's a, this- this knife cuts both ways, but either we get out ahead of it and we designate trails and we support it and we manage it, I'm sure that's why the state, 'cause a lot of cities, municipalities, um, heck, up on the mountain, um, the county, the sheriff's department is having a nightmare with it and it's not just, I mean, people are recreating and they're using ATVs, a lot of them are also doing it while using substances, a lot of them are speeding. Um, some cities are just getting overrun, so, we either get out ahead of it and we have good management and good education and have some designated trails for them to go on, or we just, it kinda becomes the Wild West and enforcement just gets harder and harder, so. It's the reality, these, I remember, I'm sorry, I'm gonna save my voice, the first time I heard the term, "A ranger," and I was like, "What is a ranger?" Those were the first side-by-sides that came out, I had no idea how big they would blow up. But, this is the- this is the world we live in, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the signage up the ATV trail, going up the canyon as designated on the trail map and install the signage.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear any opposed, so, motion carries. All right, this next thing, I'm not, uh, you know, in a perfect world, I would have a work meeting agenda item before, um, I brought it to council, but I was made aware that our restaurant tax money that we have available through the county, um, generally what it's used for is, um, facilities and so, and just kinda brainstorming what facilities our city needed that would be within reach and basically kind of demand-driven, that didn't involve a lot of, um, I don't know, trying to figure out which project we could attach, when- what people would come in town for to eat at our restaurants, because that's really what this is. Um, I keep hearing about, you know, the pickleball program and the pickleball tournaments and these happening all over, especially in Southern Utah, and a lot of these tournaments being sold out the day they open and, um, just this opportunity to have people recreate in our community and then also eat at our restaurants and- and they love to come here and have a reason to come here. Our program itself in Parowan has doubled this year, um, just to kinda give you an idea, that program is- is really, really, um, going well and then the people involved are going around and winning first and second place at these other support tournaments, so we have a really strong home league, home team, if you- if you think about, you know, that way. You probably see some of these, uh, tournament announcements and these ribbon-holding people and it's kinda fun to watch how things are going there. And so, there were some marketing dollars and things, we were, you know, just kinda thinking about things we could- could do in terms of- of, um, ways to use this, but then it just kept coming back around to pickleball. And so, just prelimin- preliminarily, I talked to that board, um, the person who is in charge of it and just brought up the idea. And so, in the background, just in case, I- I didn't really, like, scan this for everybody, but I can pass it around to the council and, but we had done a map, um, we'd had Steve Wolsey do a survey and he had designed back in two thousand and seventeen, a place at Lions Park where there were tennis courts and a basketball court and that was something that I looked at a lot, because I know we have a hard time growing grass at that park and that park is one that, you know, as far as utilization, probably could be used better. So, that's one of the possible locations for these courts. But, the interesting part about this, um, restaurant tax money is it doesn't require a match. Um, obviously, the applicant weighs higher if they have a match, but that match can be in kind, it can be excavation, it can be dirt work, it can be the land that the- the, um, facility goes on. And so, I got one bid for it and I do have that for the council and it'll probably, just about every bid we ever get is surprising. But, a big component of this bid is the way the concrete, the tensioned concrete is put together, so it lasts a really long time in our weather. And, you know, obviously, if we were able to move forward on this, we could get multiple bids and- and do it the way we need to do it, but this is just kinda giving you an idea. Um, this particular company has built courts here in Parowan, so, they know our area and have had good feedback from people that have used them and that's really kinda just where I'm coming from on getting these numbers. But, um, these would be courts that, actually, we have kinda two options on where we could build them, but one of the big questions for the council is just, do you even wanna- But one of the big questions for the council is just, do you even wanna pursue this money? Um, the deadline is tomorrow, it's a very basic application. And then there would be a committee that would review it. In January, we would go in front of that committee and talk to them about this application. And we would have time to put more detail together between now and then. Um, and that committee is comprised of restaurant owners as well as a couple of representatives from the county and a representative actually from Parowan. So, I feel like we're in a good place to at least make a go at it. Um, these would be six regulation courts. I have a picture of a similar facility that this company built, if you could bring that up, Callie. Just to get a feel for what we're talking about, I have, um, the image I like is, I like this one just because it's, uh, just shows you kinda what six courts could look like. But just a point of interest, um, this is, this would cover forty thousand square feet, which seems like a lot. It's almost an acre of grass that we could remove and not have to try to water rocks and keep growing and taking care of. But also, it would give us a tremendous facility to house these tournaments as well as take care of our community. Um, the neat thing about these courts is they do have removable netting, they could also have basketball goals installed. Um, they're versatile, so if you wanted two to be for basketball and four to be for pickleball or, you know, if we do the tournaments that they like to do, the city tournaments, we could do those on these courts. Um, the end goal down the road, maybe a phase two or a phase three, would be to put a cover over them. But for this year, this round, we would go for, uh, these kinds of courts. And then just because it's never easy, especially if you spend a day in my brain. Um, we've also talked to the school board, not specifically directly, but through Principal Bailey about participating in the building that they're building at the school. So, my grant would be general in that, um, I would be proposing pickleball courts for Parowan. But there would be a potential for putting that money toward the building over at the school, which would enhance that opportunity for a multipurpose facility that the community would have access to. So, I know that's a lot to wrap your head around. And really, a question that I was asked from one of the council people is what if you get the grant and we don't take it? The money would just get reabsorbed. Um, it wouldn't be great in terms of, you know, somebody else could potentially get it if they hadn't awarded it to us. So, I would just ask for your support in at least going for this grant to see about getting this facility for us with an option on location of where this would be, where these would be built. And one other question, I'm just trying to kinda get ahead of maybe a couple of questions. Volleyball's becoming a big sport, because we had an amazing volleyball team this year. We have a player here in the audience. Um, these would only be appropriate for volleyball if the surface was, um, rolled out over the top of them, because they're, they've got some, they've got some abrasion to them for, for the purpose of pickleball. And they'd be fine for basketball, but really not suitable for diving. And so, this really, if you think about these courts, think about them in terms of, um, basketball, pickleball, tennis, because it's just different striping, and also just concrete surfaces, which, you know, down the road, there might be other things that we could include some versatility for, for the community. And for those of you who didn't see the bid, and just so you're in the know on it, the entire bid is three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, which, again, you know, of course, none of us see numbers and go, "Oh, that's less than I thought it would be."
Can, can we call it a cost estimate?
Cost estimate.
We will officially bid it.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is true, that's bad word.
Approved, if it's awarded, you know, but this is just to apply for the grant, right?
Yeah, de- definitely, take that back off of my comment. But this just kinda gives you an overview. I mean, even in the meantime, since I got this estimate, I've had a couple of community members that own contracting companies that have offered in-kind concrete for different things. And I made a phone call to one of them and said, you know, "If we're pour, if we're pouring this pad, you know, is this something, can you do this, um, this engineered concrete slab?" And, you know, he's like, "We can do that kinda work too." So, I am almost considering this number to be a high cost estimate, but it's at least a talking point for this evening and it would be what I would put on the, um, grant application.
And what did you say our portion would be?
Um, so, this particular grant doesn't require a match. Um, they like to see a match of some kind, it can be in kind or it can be, um, money, but it isn't required.
Mayor?
Yes.
Why is, why was this proposal put on a action meeting when it should've been on a work meeting? Where we could've had a chance as a council to be informed of this? This is the first any of us have heard about this grant or the opportunity for it. And to have it thrown like it is, we have no way of, of, you know, we're supposed to take an action on it and we're barely getting the information. That's, that's not the way it needs to be. We need to be involved... We're responsible for the spending of citizens' money. We need to have an opportunity to discuss it. And to have it thrown like this, it puts us in the position of, if you vote against it, then you don't care about the city. And that's not true and that's not fair.
Well, and the other option is to say not this year, we can look at it next year. I think the reason it, and it's not ideal, I mean, I'm the first to admit, I didn't even think they would consider it. And I didn't realize it would even be an option. And when I found out they would consider it and it was an option, I felt like it would be negligent for me to not even try. And again, if it's something you say, "We could look at it in twenty-three," we might be in a totally different place by then in terms of, um, opportunity for, for this, but that's fine too. There really isn't a wrong answer, it's more, this is an opportunity. And I don't know in the past, I mean, I need to ask past council members and maybe spend some time and minutes. But I don't know if every time a grant was applied for, like, I think grants just get applied for. But I, I'm hopeful that, you know, I, I don't even know, is it protocol for grants to, if they're even being applied for, to go through approval if there's not a match?
Well, if, if the city's name's on it, yeah, it has to have council approval.
Okay, so...
If you're committing the city to anything, it requires the council's approval.
Okay, so I just know there have been grants...
Is that not right, Dan?
That have been applied for that I...
I would say if you're legally...
Committed.
But, but that point comes usually when you sign the grant, not when you apply, depending on the grant application. And, and I, and I, so I agree with you. I mean, we can have a policy that says we're not even gonna apply for anything without official approval. That could be a city's, you know, policy we could put in place.
But I mean, these grants require a city's backing.
Um, only when we're signing the agreement.
But again, I was the one that asked Molly, asked the mayor, excuse me, that what does it do for Parowan if we apply for it and then reject it?
Doesn't look...
Does, does that do anything to the city? That doesn't look, in my, in my...
I totally agree. I'm just saying, it's not a hard yes or no legally. And maybe, maybe a Christian could weigh any on his head.
I know we've had grants awarded historically.
But I'm thinking at the point where you're going to be spending funds that are not appropriated, the city council has to, um, sign onto that.
Yeah, so until it's accepted and signed off on and you're taking the money and doing everything, then there's no legal obligation.
But that's a technicality.
Yeah, maybe not illegal, but...
Right.
The city council should be informed.
So, yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying technically, no. But I, I think that the city council absolutely should be in, informed.
But...
Totally agree.
One, one of the things, uh, that, that was said is, what are the ramifications if it's awarded and we don't accept it? The problem is, is the next time you apply for a grant, there could be some bias.
Yeah.
Where they say, "Well, we pushed somebody else back to give it to these guys" and then they turn around and thumb their nose at us, so...
Right.
Um, Dan, real quick on this. This is the same type of grant that the economic development is going through, isn't it? It's the same money kinda?
No, this is...
Is it totally different?
Totally different pot. This is a county grant. Um, the, the, the grant that economic development applied for was a state grant from governor's office. No, these are two totally different agencies, totally different pots of money.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure on that.
But, but to your point, Jim, we wanna communicate, we wanna have a plan, we want to, as a, as a body, go after that. I just was technically answering your question when I say, before the city council absolutely has to, to sign off, that's when you're gonna be expending money and...
But I mean, it's on the action, which requires the city council to take action. If it was on a work meeting, then we could discuss it and then move it to an action.
Right.
So, I think is the reason, just, 'cause this is the first time I'm hearing this too, but just let me, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, is the reason that it just got brought today is because we just found out that we could use this money for this type of facility and the deadline is tomorrow.
Right.
And so, we didn't have that information or anything like, the last council meeting, where we only had one council meeting in November.
Right, right. And, I mean, it would obviously be on the next council meeting in December, if we could go that direction, but the grant would still be submitted. Um, if, for instance, we had a meeting just on the fly about it, um, I could also just not present on the eleventh and it wouldn't even be an application that would even be being considered, because someone's going to have to show up and present on January eleventh. But we don't have another council meeting until January fourteenth. So, it isn't, I mean, I, and just historically, obviously, I haven't been to every city council meeting, but there have been grants that have been applied for. I know that sometimes I'll hear about a grant we were awarded. I don't know that every one of them has gone through city council. Um, I'm, I'm not gonna make a statement about that. But as far as this particular one, definitely not an ideal ask. But also one that I'm like, I don't wanna pass it up if there isn't interest from the council. If the council's like, "This is too short of notice, we'd rather push this to, uh, twenty-three," it would just be the same time next year in twenty twenty-three and that's perfectly fine.
Well, my only question for, as far as the courts, and I'm not a pickleball player, so, there's a couple out here. You've got a canyon breeze. What does that do for pickleball with, with the wiffle ball? And I know it's not a wiffle ball, but it's sort of like a wiffle ball, so don't take it.
Yeah, there's windshield that they, um, will provide for your exterior fencing and that windshield is...
See, I don't see that on here. I see court fencing, but it's not...
I think she's just provided like an example to give us, like, and, just like an overview of what it possibly could look like.
This is one of their projects that doesn't have the windshield, but if you wanted to see the windshield.
And this is where I think, I know you said you talked to, to Jeb, who's over the program, but I think we should talk to actual pickleball players that know what wind and all of that does. 'Cause even, I'm, I was, I was a tennis player. Wind does make the ball move. And there is a lot of canyon breeze. I'm not trying to downplay pickleball, tennis or any sport. We need something for our kids, but we need to really look at the environment we're gonna build these, where we're at.
Well, and I think...
That's my only...
And then also, I don't, I didn't hear that we have designated a spot for them yet, have we?
I heard it was Lyons Park.
Or it could...
A potential spot, but that's not what we've decided.
Yeah.
And that's what we need to know before we apply for it. Because I, this is just my opinion, I don't wanna apply for something and we get it and then say, "No, thank you, we're not gonna do it this year." That's just my opinion.
Could, could you come speak in the mic or, I don't, Dave is not gonna be able to hear you. Assuming the mayor is fine with it.
Hi, Mayor. Um, no, we play pickleball and right now, all of our facilities are indoor, which makes a big difference. But the wind problem located at Lyons Park, um, would be caused for, I mean, it would cut down on the amount of days that you could use the park for pickleball, okay? So, and I, when I heard it was gonna be at Lyons Park, I don't know how that got out there. Um, I was hoping that we would consider over by where the pool was supposed to go, so that's something. But that's a good point about the weather. Thank you.
And so, you know, and that brings up the other side of the, um, option, which is, we could use the same money to contribute to the building that's being built at the high school. And again, this is a, this is a long conversation, but if we did wanna contribute money toward pickleball courts and rec facility, that's something that we could use this money for. I did confirm that with the director of this grant, or I don't know if her position is the director, but...
So, the, the, what's the issue with the, uh, multipurpose building at the elementary?
There's no issue with it, it would just be additional funding that could make that building have more functionality, be bigger. It's some, and I guess Principal Bailey, you could address that when you speak in the work meeting or you could address it now, but we could go there when we get to that agenda item. But, um, there is no issue with that building, it's just additional funding to make that building bigger.
Is the district gonna help with these, since they're, the tenant can be used as tennis courts?
From what I understand, I'd be...
So, I, I think that, and, and, and we talked with Principal Bailey for a minute this morning. Um, if, if the city were to go after grant funding for pickleball generically, now, this is a local grant, so there's a lot more flexibility, even with the timing of the funds. Um, one thing that Maria did say, now, again, her board is the one that votes, but, but she is the tourism director. Pickleball is so popular right now that pickleball is something that the county wants to, 'cause ultimately, this money needs to be spent on, um, on facilities, um, including convention and recreation facilities and things like that, convention space, right? You're trying to bring outside money into an area, um, to be spent, back into restaurants, right? So, hearing the word pickleball, she says, "Yes, that's so popular right now, there is, there's a lot of people, they'll travel, they'll do tournaments." The, the county's tourism department absolutely, this is a great idea. Now, her board still has to, to do that. And, um, if we were to do something with the school district, it would be, um, obviously owned by the school district, but this could become part of this, if the city were to participate, we could have an MOU, meaning that we could do some city rec stuff. We could have some tournaments there, we could do things like that and have some degree of ownership, knowing that we play second fiddle. As the school district's gonna put in six to eight million into building that multipurpose facility for the school district needs. Cafeteria, um, PE stuff during the day. But in the evenings and on weekends and, you know, tournaments could be scheduled, free playtime could be scheduled. That's what that would look like, you know, theoretically, as it was, as it was talked through today. It wouldn't be one hundred percent the city's, which, of course, if the city builds something, there's nothing to say that we wouldn't work with the school district to say, "Hey, if you wanna use this, you wanna have a, you know, tennis teams or something like that."
I mean, look at our soccer field.
Right. And so, we've gotta, we've gotta figure that out, we're looking to maybe refresh an MOU there as well. Um, when, anytime there's, there's usage from two entities, then you can look at some cost sharing for O and M and so forth.
Right.
Which is a win-win, the soccer field's a perfect example. Um, there's not enough need for the city to have a full set of soccer fields and the school district in a very small town. We can come up with an MOU that we can share that facility, share the O and M, we just have to figure it out. So, anyways, um, but, and I wasn't there, I haven't, I wasn't there for, for the mayor's conversation with Maria. But, and so I don't wanna put words into your mouth, mayor, mayor. But I think Maria said she'd be open to generically call it pickleball and then figure out the details. But if that's too soon, too fast, we could look at it next year, it's not a...
What, what amount are we, are we talking about, or has that even been determined?
I gave her the number on this, um, estimate, just kind of as the only number we have so far and...
Oh, there's not, there's not a predetermined amount that they're...
No.
They'll fund projects as opposed to...
Right.
Give you money, okay?
No, the county has a certain chunk that comes in every year and then they have who knows how many applicants that come in. They weight them on a scale based on a lot of different factors. It's quite a process and then they go ahead and make awards. Sometimes, um, in fact, a lot of that money is, is, the, the county itself has applied for to be spent at the fairgrounds. So, the county is approaching the county, keep in mind, there's separate pots of money, to get some of that money to go into the fairgrounds. That's how a lot of the upgrades have been done this year at the fairgrounds, was with, I think Maria awarded a hundred and fifty thousand, or her board awarded a hundred and fifty thousand to the county, which is some of the spends that was made up there. They spent more than that in other things, but... awarded a hundred and fifty thousand to the county, which is some of the spend that was made up there. They spent more than that in other things, but. So this is that money, but it is locally controlled and there's a high degree of flexibility, assuming that their board gets behind it and it is a legal use of these funds and it doesn't get outweighed by another grant applicant.
So hypothetically, if we apply for this grant, they award us a certain amount of money, whatever that may be, and we change whatever we want to put it towards. Is there a certain amount of time that we have to use those funds?
Um, Maria has flexibility. Um, typically she wants to see them spent in a year, but there's times when projects just don't happen within a year. There's times where she'll say, yeah, we'll give you four hundred thousand dollars, but we have so many applications, we're going to spread it over three years. There's other times where they say, okay, given the demands of everything right now, take it or leave it, it's got to be this year. Um, it just really kind of depends on her current, um, situation. But this sounded like she gave some kind of favorable nod that this would be a good year and they really like pickleball projects, so.
And has Parowan ever applied for this? Because I know that this money you can apply for e- every year. Has Parowan ever applied for their portion of the restaurant tax? I know we have not as many restaurants as what Cedar and, you know, is, but we do put a little money into the pot every year.
Mm-hmm.
So I didn't know, has Parowan ever tried to go after any of that money for anything?
Jet sits on their board and I'm pretty sure that there's requests made, but I can't tell you detail.
Historically, I know of-
Does everybody know Jet is on this board?
I did not know that.
Yeah.
No.
So historically, I know of two. Um, Gail Harris applied for re- repairs renovations at the stables that she and Jim did. They got money for that from this, from this fund. And then when we, um, the trails committee, um, did the trailhead relocation at Valentine's Peak, we applied through this funding source for that money. So those are the only two that I know of and those were three or four years, I think more than that, maybe four years ago. Um, but tho- those were, yeah, and they said they hadn't seen Parowan in a, in a, in a while.
I was just curious.
Yeah. So I don't, I mean, again, yes, you can come up, because if you speak, you need to come up.
I just, I'm curious, I haven't been here for past conversations about this, so forgive me, but it, it sounds, I'm gathering that this money can be used for kind of what we deem necessary. What about like pool or rec center for our children or anything like that? Is this, is this options we can consider? So if, don't give me that look.
Yeah, and, and again, yes, next year. That would be to, we, we don't even have anything to talk about there yet.
Okay, I don't want to make challenges with it. I was just curious if it's-
Yeah, no, that's a great question.
Options to discuss for future.
The answer is yes, and it's for facilities. I think at one point we may have had some contribution now that we're talking about it to one of our bathrooms. I think that this fund did help with-
At the Lions Park, or was that?
Or the ball fields.
It was either-
Ball fields, maybe the ball fields.
I think it was the ball fields or Lions Park, so-
I'm not sure. I think we might have gotten something for the Meek, uh, the Meeks Pond.
Oh, maybe.
Long time ago.
Okay.
But I'm not certain on that, because we applied for everything under the sun.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to characterize the conversation I had with Maria a while ago, but I remember her saying there wasn't a high degree of appetite for them to fund Parowan's pool, but I don't know if that was thinking, Parowan better not come ask for us to fund the entire thing, or, I can't remember the conversation. It was more than a year ago. Um, but we can always apply. It's recreation, it's convention centers, it's, it's infrastructure. Um, we can always apply, but it's playing the game. It's knowing what they're looking for, knowing what, you know, lights up their, you know, excitement and, and things like that. Pickleball, boom, you know, um, but, but maybe, maybe we want to go ask for something else, but.
So to light up their world, we should ask for pickleball, but we don't necessarily have to use that.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go and trade their pickleball-
No, 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 no.
We would-
Well, I'm just saying, I-
That's called fraud.
We could incorporate their sport.
No, like I'm saying, like, so a pickleball court striped also for tennis and basketball with removable components to be able to-
Right.
Play any of those sports on that-
Right, right.
Pad at one of the two locations, which identified, I mean, again, I could be completely wrong. We could just say at a location in Parowan. Um, could be, you know, the school building or school grounds. It could be out there at Lions. It could be at Valentine's Peak. I mean, we could say at a facility location in Parowan, but our goal is six, um, official courts with a goal at some point of around two or stage two of being able to cover them, because ideally we, they're all weathered all year or we can play, you know, all year round, less, less break time, which I, I do think this community needs more opportunity for, uh, for recreation in general.
Yeah, I do appreciate the opportunity for recreation. I think stuff like this is great. I do have a high concern for the activities for our children to do, and I feel like pickleball is very much directed towards an older aged group. So that would just be something I would take into consideration with this.
All right. Did you want to say something? All right, come on up.
I was just also wondering if we are doing an outside facility, just because I know lights up at our baseball field.
Mm-hmm.
We've never gotten those, but it just seems like if we don't put lights up, then it's, again, limiting of when you can actually use them if it doesn't end up going into an indoor facility. So I would say, like the missed opportunity up at the baseball field where we could have had lights, but we didn't get the lights is don't let that opportunity pass up with this one. If, I would just say, take that into consideration.
And this particular estimate does include lights, perfect.
So it's regulation courts with regulation lighting. Perfect, thank you.
And, and the grant that, was it Matt? Sorry, Councilman Gail, somebody asked about that. We, the economic development committee did just write a grant. We're waiting for an award which will light part- The, the grant is written so that will light the entire Valentine Peaks, Valentine Peaks com- sports complex. And it'll probably be in phases. We don't know whether we'll do the soccer fields first. We did get the lights from SUU. Um, but we really want to put new LED lights on the baseball field, um, and maybe new LED lights over the whole thing. But we've written that grant pretty generically where we should find out in the next week or so. And we're probably going to have to ask for that grant several years to get that facility completely lit. But that's a priority of economic development, which is if you were here for the last committee meeting, the last council meeting, that was one of the reasons we needed to make economic development a formal committee to apply for that grant, so things are, things are moving.
Hi, Carol Cable. Just a quick comment. It started out as a project for seniors because it was lower impact than tennis. Currently, some of our big sports figures have purchased and are organizing professional teams and it's on the calendar in the last article that I read to become an Olympic event. So it's not for seniors only. It's for anyone that wants to be active and maybe can't do other things, but it is widely popular. As a matter of fact, Alice Heidenreich and myself were the first two people to play in Parowan. And it's, uh, going to be a big moneymaker, I think, in terms of being able to draw people in for events and tournaments. I don't see it going away. It's just grown exponentially over the past few years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and that's why I mentioned that it lights up the tourism, TRCC board, because they're seeing this being a big driver of dollars for tourism. People are, they're going to a place and doing a tournament. When they're there, they're spending money the whole time. That's the kind of thing that gets the, the board, the board, it consists mostly of restaurant owners. And so they want to see things that are going to bring events into a community. That's why this gets them really excited, but anyways.
Um, just speaking kind of for youth a little bit, we of course love the multi-purpose building that's going to be built here in the next few years, but it's also a building that we can't get into all the time. And so it'd be really cool to have pickleball courts and have basketball plays, like stuff like this, where during the summertime, we don't need a faculty member there. We don't need to have somebody watch us. It'll be just a time where we can go and do something. Because we love our town, of course, and it's an amazing town, but there's not a whole bunch for, I think, youth to kind of go and do. And so I think having this would be very helpful and it'd just kind of be enjoyable, I think, for everybody, but.
All right, so, I mean, again, not an ideal ask, but something I didn't want to just not even do anything. The easy thing is to do nothing. I mean, and I, and even looking at this, I was just like, ugh. But I wanted to at least throw it out here and if council says table it, that's fine. If council says no, that's fine. Um, if council says yes, that's fine, and again, we, you know, could talk individually or two of you with me at a time if you'd like to talk more before a presentation would need to be given on the eleventh of January. Um, at any point, we could obviously, you know, just flush out a little bit more with, you know, the school board and some other things because that, we do have some time. We have a month, you know, to kind of figure out what we're doing, a little over a month, granted, we've got Christmas and that during that time. But, um, but I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that, uh, at this time that we table this, um, and need a little more information on this of where it's going, how it looks, and, um, I like the idea, but, uh, um, where we've got, I don't want to burn our bridges with them. If, you know, we don't, we get it and then we don't have a place or can't get it and stuff like that. I'm a little nervous on that. And plus if we're looking at the pool, you know, um, dollar wise too, we, we want to, maybe, can we incorporate that? I like a lot, a lot of the inputs. I really do, so my motion is to table it this time. Let's revisit this, um, just a little bit too soon.
And just a discussion point on, on that as well, um, the pool is going to take longer and that was one of the reasons, you know, I did want to talk about this tonight is this would be something that we could provide to the community, um, for activities sooner, especially if this were to be funded. So that's just discussion during the, during the motion on the table.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
All right, Dan, would you restate that motion, please? I couldn't understand it.
My motion was to table at this time.
So you're asking to table it?
Yes. Too much information, too much, too quick. I think we need to discuss it and two options. I mean, there's just little, you know, where to go and stuff like that, it's just what ifs.
So if I, you know, just again, I'm just discussing, but if I don't apply, we, we can't talk about it.
There's a motion on the table.
I, and we can discuss during motions on the table.
Can, okay.
Um, that once we don't apply, we can't, but we could have discussion for a month before we would need to present and we could withdraw before the presentation date of January eleventh. We could withdraw.
So do I understand the deadlines tomorrow?
Yes.
There's not a council meeting between now and when it's?
There's nothing to say that we couldn't schedule a council meeting, but there's not a scheduled council meeting between now and the presentation date.
What date is the presentation date?
Eleven.
January eleventh.
And the next scheduled city council meeting is on the fourteenth.
Mm-hmm. And if we withdraw before the eleventh, our application would not be reviewed. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries. All right, moving now to action meeting item number thirteen. This is the city council's voting on the sales of fundraising bricks for Save the Old Rock Church renovation.
So my name's on this one as well, and this is something I have come to late, but there has been a lot of work done. Um, Mayor, do you want to mention who has been involved and done so much work on this? Ken Lambertson, I don't want to miss a name, the Zaleskis, I can't remember their first names.
Karen Miller, Tom and Liz Zaleski, um, the historic committee, I think, has been involved as well. Jim might be able to speak to that more.
And David, David Burton was on this.
David Burton, and, I mean, we had a meeting a few months ago. We had a great turnout. Everyone was extremely supportive. We've just been getting, um, questions answered and things to be able to move forward with fundraising bricks to the other-
But it's really been Ken and Tom and Liz and, and Karen Miller have really been the spearhead of it.
So in order, the, the, the concept and, and I think we need to do a big reveal, a big, we, we met just this group that was just described to figure out the details of what the bricks would look like so that the fundraiser can start. So this is not the launch of the fundraiser. We need to do a, we, we, we talked about putting a committee together that would help to, to spearhead the sales of these bricks, and so I, the big fundraiser reveal is yet to come. But what the decision point needs to be made is we are ready, we have met with, um, the company that does these brick fundraisers that, that creates and sells the bricks. We've talked about font, size of bricks, um, color, um, the price point, the price point that the bricks would be at. Um, named the project, Save the Old Rock Church, Brick by Brick, Save Our Heritage. You guys like that? That was the committee's thing, and, and, and really, this is not going too far to say, if we don't do this and come up with the funds, that building will not exist very much longer. Um, the, 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 um, the example that was shared, they had a, an old rock church building in what town was it?
In Alpine.
In Alpine, Utah. There was a fire. They had to tear it down.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, this, structurally, this building is getting more and more unsound, specifically the roof. If the roof were to collapse, it very well could be a bridge too far to bring it back. So that's, when we use the term Save the Old Rock Church, it's not hyperbole. It is, it's really where we're at. We either get moving on it now, raise the money, or this facility may, um, be gone. And just to clarify for those that are new to Parowan or new to this project, the Parowan City owns the Rock Church. It is not owned by the LDS Church. It is not, um, at, at one point, it could have been, probably was, but the city has owned this thing for a long time.
Long co- they, the city took it when the church said that they were going to tear it down. The, the city stepped up and, and took over. Same with the Jesse Smith home. Uh, back to your, the council has allocated money for the architectural, uh-
Design?
Design, thank you, and one of the top restoration architects in the state is involved in it. And, and the DUP has, has worked tirelessly to, to get this done. Uh, the thing with the, just as Dan said, we've got to save it or it's going to fall in. And that collection from the DUP inside the Old Rock Church is literally worth millions. And it has to be saved, so we've got to get on the, on this brick project. Any of you been down to the Veterans Monument in Cedar? You'll see those bricks down there. Or up in Salt Lake, the, the bricks for the, uh, two thousand and two Olympics. That's the type of thing that we're, we're looking at. Uh, talked to Karen Miller. The idea is to have a pathway from the Rose Garden to the Veterans Monument and around the, the Rock Church. Uh, and part of the, the reason it's taken so long is we had to set up, uh, the Heritage Foundation so that they could collect money and, uh, accept donations and so-
It's a five oh one seed, right?
Five oh one, whatever.
So donations can be, can be received as tax.
Then you get the tax credit and all of, all of that.
The reason I asked Kelly to, Cali to bring up the, our website is this is literally the logo for Parowan. If anybody didn't know, that's where that is. When the, when the city was bor- was built by our pioneer heritage, they built a church and they built a school. And that church was a community center. And that church was a community center. Um, that's anyways, that's why it's the city talking about spending money on a church. But you're, we've estimated based on the cost estimate that the engineer came up with, um, we're, we're shooting for two and a half million dollars. And that's probably going to take some serious time to, to raise that money. But this is the primary funding mechanism. Um, of course, we will go after grants. There are restoration grants, there's a lot of grants, but in all those cases, they want to see serious grant or serious community involvement, match dollars. So we can use all the donations we get from this as match dollars towards any additional grants to fill that thermometer. That's kind of the concept here. Um, and so the, what's specifically on the agenda is for the council to, to approve, um, the ad hoc committee's, um, work on, on the, the bricks. We're ready to apply with the company for the program. They're sending us in case the council wants to see when we get them. I think they'll be here.
Monday.
Monday. Um, a, um, a trial brick, a, of, of the color that the, the committee thought would match, um, the Old Rock Church the best. And so if you want to come and look at it and then ultimately if we're happy with it, we'll pull the trigger with them and initiate a contract. And then they will do this fundraiser when we've received, we'll probably do it in phases. Um, they wanted to have a deadline. If you don't have a deadline, people won't engage. You need a deadline and they wanted that, the committee said the deadline, with the first deadline would be June seventeenth, which is the last day of Old Rock Church days. So we'll, we'll get it up and running. We'll get the committee, we'll do a big launch, figure out how we're going to market this, um, including, you know, past, um,
Stewards.
stewards of Parowan email list, um, um, and, um, we'll do it, we'll do newspaper, we'll do social media and we'll have a committee and do a big push. So that's what we're talking about and what needs approval.
Okay, so I would call for a vote from the city council to approve pursuing fundraising through fundraising brick for the Save the Old Rock Church project.
One more detail, sorry. And that's my bad because I just realized it while you were talking. We will have the Heritage Foundation be the, um, um, the steward of all the donations until it gets to a point where we're ready to, to act on it. And then they will, um, give that money to the city. At that point, we'll budget for the revenue and the expense to happen. But all this money will be accruing within the revenue, I mean, within the Heritage Foundation. And I need to talk to Kristen, um, about, about the details, but we're going to use a company called authorize.net. Um, we're going to try to make it as easy as possible to donate, um, if you want to buy a brick. But we'll add it to our website, we'll do all that stuff and it'll be on all the marketing so people, they can scan a QR code, buy a brick. Um, by the way, the price points, it's going to be a hundred and fifty dollars for a four inch by eight inch brick and three hundred dollars for an eight inch by eight inch brick. We've also talked about coming up with some sort of a mechanism that if we have some, you know how they'll do things like this and they'll have like a platinum level donor? You may have a company that needs to park a bunch of money to avoid taxes and they may throw a hundred thousand dollars at us. Um, we're, we're talking, um, State Bank of Southern Utah has indicated they want to be a major partner in this program, the use of their logo, and they'll, they'll throw some serious money at it. And so we want to have a mechanism for large donors. Maybe we put benches, this is an idea that we talked about, ben- a, a few benches around the path and that bench has that major.
Memorial benches, yeah.
Above a certain threshold, they get a bench type thing. So this is the discussion, but today we need to just approve the brick contract.
Dan, on, on this, is the initial money paying for those bricks is coming from the city? Or is it come through the?
It comes out of the donation.
So but the, who, w- w- don't we have to initially purchase the bricks?
Nope.
Nope.
No, this is what this company does.
That's what they do. That's why we went with them is because it, there was no up cost, upfront cost for the city.
So let's say we raise five hundred thousand dollars in the first phase. They're going to say, great, that buys you, and these were what people bought. And they say, okay, this is how much all the bricks cost. They take that out of your five hundred thousand dollars and we get a check for the difference. Um, but I know that this program was well vetted. J- Jim can talk about that.
Ken, Ken spent a lot of time, uh, looking into these different potential fundraisers and, and as Dan said, that this one was, was the best, had the longest history. Uh, so pretty confident in it, but we got to save it.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the sale of fundraising, fundra- raising, excuse me, bricks for the Save, Save the Old Rock Church.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, now moving into the work meeting. This is when we discuss these agenda items and, um, have an opportunity to learn more about, um, things that are up and coming. So the first one on this is item number fourteen, which is an update on the PHS Parowan City Resolution, um, presented by Principal Kim Bailey. And some of the student body, some of the student body government, it looks like, some representatives. Maybe introduce yourselves by name so we know who you are.
Um, I'm Daisy Dunlap and I'm student body president at Parowan High. Um, and we just want to start by thanking you guys for having us here today. It's been so nice to have the support of our town and everything that we have done this year. Uh, it's taken a load off, load off of our shoulders when we know that you guys are behind us, so thank you. Um, I'm going to turn the time over to Madely and Sydney to talk about some of our activities.
Um, I'm Sydney Smith. I'm the senior class president. Um, so as you know, um, we, at Parowan High School, we kind of do a lot of activities that involve, um, not only Parowan City, but also, um, like the police department and elementary school and kind of everything. Um, but some of the activities that we have been able to accomplish are the homecoming parade, which, um, we have the, uh, police support us and we were able to contact local businesses about, um, lining, um, all of the elementary school classes and some of the high school classes out in front of their business. And, um, they, we went, us, um, in student government, went around to local businesses on Main Street and asked if they were willing to, um, not close, but, um, I don't know how to word this, like move their customers or ask their customers to not park on Main Street to provide us the ability to, um, walk or go down Main Street, which is really helpful. Um, and then also the, um, Parowan Smi- City Police Department, um, closed down part of Main Street for us. So we just wanted to thank you guys for that. And then another, um, activity that we were able to do was our Halloween celebration, um, in the park with the help from Jet Smith as well as a bunch of others. Um, we had a really good turnout and it was, uh, overall success. And we were really grateful for all the help that we received from you guys. We a- were able to get a lot of people and we did during the daytime, which is one of our, um, main priorities, is that not all of Parowan, um, neighborhoods have streetlights and so it's dark and sometimes dangerous to go trick or treating. And we were able to get a lot of kids out there to, um, help them celebrate Halloween. So we just wanted to thank you guys for help with those activities.
Our next event that we hosted was the Veterans Day Assembly. And we were really grateful, um, for when you guys provided the charcuterie boards, when we, uh, gave the veterans refreshments after the assembly. And so we just wanted to thank you for that and for helping us with that. And then finally, to finish up our recent events, we had our Thanksgiving luncheon and we wanted to thank you, um, who came and participated and helped us. And our next goal is to get our invitations out a little bit sooner next time so that you guys have a bit more notice.
Can I just say something to you guys? That was one of the best veterans assemblies I've been to. And I've been to a lot. You guys did an outstanding job and you have no idea how much the veterans appreciate that. To see you guys up there, absolutely perfect. And you guys need to be thanked because you did an amazing job. And personally, you made this old guy cry, just to let you know.
That was our goal, actually, we wanted to make him cry.
Usually they beat me up, but no, seriously, you guys, and, and pass that word on to all of the juniors and seniors. You guys did amazing and thank you. Thank you very much.
We love the veterans assembly. We looked forward to it every year and this year it was really cool to see the slideshow that was up there and to see the veterans go all the way back to like, it was like nineteen, I can't remember.
It was like the Korean War and World War One.
Yeah.
How far they got.
It was so cool to see all the names and to see like distant relatives of even us. So it was super neat. So thank you for coming. Um, we just, again, want to thank you for all of your support and we're excited to see what else to come. And we will turn the time over to Mr. Bailey, so.
Just want to thank our student body. I think they're doing an excellent job representing Parowan and the spirit of community, which is what, the way we started this year when we came to you with our resolution and said, hey, we need to do better, we need to work together. There are things that we can see on the horizon that we can improve. Um, we couldn't have done that assembly without people in this community. They helped make it happen. And there were many, many people who spent many hours researching those names and helping us update our information so that we can make that possible. So just a shout out to them because it was an amazing, it was an amazing thing and again, brought the spirit of community, which is what we, what we've desired. When we left this meeting last time, these girls were with me, most of them, I think, except with the exception of one. And they commented how they felt here and how that impacted their life. So these things are important and this is why we're doing what we're doing because we want Parowan to be successful and we want our kids to be successful and we want to build community, which is why we had the issues that we addressed earlier and why we talked about the things that are coming and forthcoming, which is why I'm here today because, um, I just want to revisit our, our pact, basically our resolution. It said we were, uh, as a community, we're going to be resolved to be true Rams. And we all kind of know what that means. As a community, we're going to find ways to work together and support each other. And we have stressed this in our school. And hopefully you've seen the evidence of that, um, um, as we've done our programs this year. As a community, we'll help educate and inform the public about our roles and responsibility, which is something that we have to do continuously. And as a community, we'll look for ways to build community spirit and build community servants and make Parowan strong. So our next big opportunity, well, we've had several, in fact, um, and I may note this as well. Today we had a grant, it's called, I, the name eludes me, but, um, where a number of gifts were donated to the elementary students here. And it's a one-time thing, a one school in the state of Utah, in a Title I school. Twenty-four planes, I think, brought gifts to the students at the elementary school. This was a big deal. Uh, the National Guard was involved. Um, this, this was one of those amazing things that doesn't happen maybe once in a lifetime. And we were able to participate in that and that was a neat thing to experience. I had a number of people come to me and share, again, the spirit of community that's developed through these things and these actions. Um, we have a number of things that we work on. We're doing a, like a penny drive that we help with the community service here that's given to the city to help those in need at this time of year. Um, but now we're also looking at Parowan's birthday and that's coming up. And every year you guys come to our school and you help us with that activity. And every year I say, well, how can we improve? And how can we get, um, everyone involved and including my students and my, and my faculty? I know you have your end of it and we have our end of it and you, we celebrate together, but it's a little, I don't know, I think there are ways to improve and I just want your thoughts. I guess as we plan now for that next opportunity, do you guys have any thoughts or ways that we could work together?
You can't get rid of the hokey pokey. It has to stay.
I think it will, yeah. We also have recognized people in the past from the community at that and that has been a big, a big thing. One thing that we have discussed at the school for our state champion volleyball team is to maybe recognize them with the community at that celebration when everyone's there. Um, something that we have discussed, but I just wanted to know if there's something on our end that we could help support you with or vice versa.
Mayor, have, have you designated a citizen of the year?
And they've been chosen, mm-hmm.
So you're going to have the grand march again, aren't you?
Yeah.
And the citizen of the year usually leads that out?
And it isn't me. I'm not sure who designates that, but I've been informed of who they are and that it has been chosen. So that's good.
Yeah, Jet usually comes to me and then asks me about it. I don't know if she does it, but.
I don't know who does it either. I just had someone come in and say, I know who should be citizen of the year this year. And so I touched base and just said, do we have a citizen of the year? And, and I was told that we did, so. And it was a different person, which again, tribute to the community. I'm sure there are a lot of people we'd love to showcase, but that citizen of the year is always carefully chosen and it's really special for them and their families and for the community to recognize them.
And one thing that I know that's, I've heard too, is you guys have put things on your marquee, um, the portable marquee that is used by the highway, uh, department. I don't know if it's the city or the.
The one at the library?
Yeah.
Are you talking portable one?
Talking about like the police one, like down by Matt's house.
It was bought with Karen's money, right?
Yeah.
And, and the, the students have noticed that when you put, hey, you know, true Rams and buckle your seatbelt and that catches their attention. And I think that also is, is great involvement, just to advertise things that we're doing and what's going on. I know it's a traffic sign, but it's been used for a number of things. Sharon, did you have?
No, I don't, I don't, I'm thinking.
The only thing I wondered about and every year I'm always surprised that there, that luncheon isn't just full. The luncheon after where there's chicken and dumpling soup and rolls and everything's so delicious and there just aren't a lot of people. I didn't know if there would be an opportunity for some of the school administration, maybe your teachers, to be able to come and eat lunch. Um, it just seems like there are a lot of empty seats at that luncheon. And I don't know if that's something we could work on unless the council has a better idea. It just seems like there's a lot of food and not as many people as we'd like to see.
Yeah, I don't know how many people want to ride with a high school student to school. I think we just covered that earlier in the meeting, didn't we? Yeah.
And maybe we could advertise that better too because I don't ever remember seeing anything as like really advertising for it. So maybe we could put that like on our website, um, I don't know, maybe on the library marquee. You know, I think there's things that we could do to better advertise it. And then the same thing with the citizen of the year recognition at the Aladdin after the luncheon is also, you know, we could have more people attend that. It's kind of a small group every year and it's such a neat time and it would be great to have more people involved. And I know that's hard with the students and teachers, but even if the student government could come over and see that recognition ceremony and there are other things that happen there, but it's really nice.
Well, you guys, again, you've made an impact earlier in the year. When my volleyball team came over, you know, they mentioned that as well. So kudos to you guys, thank you. I mean, it goes a long ways when people from the city and the community recognize what's happening, at least in our school. Um, and we'll have a number of opportunities to discuss other items, but I want to keep the dialogue open. I hope that you continue to utilize this as we are so that we're looking for ways to, to work together. Which brings me to my last, um, my last item and I've been approached by this a number of times. We have a number of people here in this community that have approached me and said, how come we don't have youth programs ran through the city? And I'm not a city person, but those programs usually feed to my high school programs. And so I said, you know what, I'll bring it up in our work meeting because I'm on the agenda. I think there are ways, and I think there are things that are happening now that would bode well for joint ventures. that would bode well for joint ventures moving forward with the facilities that we're going to be building and the things that you guys are planning. I think it's smart to start planning now, which is, I think, the earlier conversation is, hey, we didn't know about this, but, um, and that's, and that's always a hard pill to swallow, but it's also, what can we do now to plan and work together to make sure that we can build some of these things that happen? Here's an example that I've seen in other communities where there's a joint resolution on facility use. Part of the facility use issues in my school is, we have to be covered with insurance. You guys have insurance, we have insurance, we're both public entities. I have to have someone that maintains the facility and you guys can be the stewards of those things if you want to be. So, yes, we can enter resolutions and say, hey, for facility use. Now, there is a pecking order when you do that because depending on how that works and who's the owner and steward of the facility. But because as a school, we're not in competition with business, um, we can do some things to help the city with their programs and vice versa. And this is something that I think needs to continue to happen so that we can, we can involve our students and our student body and our community members in some of the things that we have to offer. We have the bulk of the facilities, the school district. And, um, you know, we want to be able to work together is basically what I'm saying. And I know that there have been issues in the past. I'm not trying to drive down a dark road. I'm saying now's the time when we can start planning and working towards something. And I think you guys, and together, we're on a precipice where we can say, hey, let's, let's do some things together, let's work together. Let's help continue to build our community, which is our overall goal, um, and try to bring some of these programs into the community. If we do, we're keeping our dollars here. Most of the parents that have spoken to me, they farm out two other programs, either in Cedar or St. George. They, they, they're involved with clubs and, you know, they're not necessarily, um, here and that, those dollars aren't staying here. So, I think this is an opportunity for us to have some dialogue. I'd love to do this, um, with all of you. Um, anyway, any thoughts on this or is this, and I'm, I have to admit that I'm new to this game. I don't know the history, all of it. But I think that, you know, with those who do know and have some historical background, we can say, hey, this is something that's happened and this is why, or, hey, this is, this is why maybe we need to do something different. Um, maybe, I'm just, I'm just asking for that dialogue, I guess. Does any, go ahead.
Well, you were talking probably about the student council, right? The student city council or what was it called?
Youth City Council.
Youth City Council.
Yeah, we had...
Do you know why that was stopped?
It, uh, lack of interest. It was one more thing that just...
Was, okay.
Fell by the listen.
Was it lack of interest on kids or?
Uh-huh.
Was it on the kids?
So, that, that's one area.
Yeah, Patty, you were on that.
I guess, I guess the bigger ask is that can we have a community youth program that's hosted by the city? And can we work together as a city and school district to help support that program?
I'm wondering if Councilman Burton can weigh in on this. We've had recent discussions about, um, rehabbing. We, our ordinance say, says, say that we will have a park and rec committee or person. I can't remember what the title is.
Yeah, we might just need some direction from councilor.
It was, oh, excuse me, what is activities director?
Activities director or a rec committee. And, and we've been talking about, um, re- reinstating that committee. And, I mean, in order for a good rec program to work, volunteers are a must. But coordination has to be done and it's tough to do by committee, but you have to have a committee that is steering it and is generating ideas and can resolve concerns and can go out and beat the bushes. Um, at the end of the day, um, and, and Councilman Burton and I just talked about this earlier today. Um, and I'm not one to say we need to add people because that's, that's, that's how government grows and it gets really expensive. But we probably need to consider maybe some use of wrap tax funds, maybe some use of the municipal TRT fund. We could even get a part-timer, a seasonal coordinator of some programs and have a committee. So, this is a conversation that we're just starting to have, um, which, the reason Councilman Burton is because that's what he's, one of the things he's over. I'm sorry, I don't want to steal your thunder, uh, Dave.
Oh, no, you're fine. Um, we were talking about recreation director, I think that was the term, a version, you know, and the, a committee. But the committee, the, it is so involved, you have the maintenance of the facilities as well as the, you know, the parks and the, the different venues and whatnot, as well as the other side, which is the activities and the programs and so forth. So, it's complex and it needs to have some direction from a committee. But like Dan was saying, somebody that is really involved and takes, you know, the, the lead and is very active and it takes a lot of time and then, and they have to be very involved in wanting to do this. And, but it is a need that our city has, just like, you know, the principals expressing. We need to have these, you know, these youth activities within the city. You know, the school can't be totally responsible for them.
One, one thing that's advan- advantageous, sorry to cut you off for show, but if there is one person that's in charge, then you have the direction that you need. If we have a joint venture, then we have the facilities that we need. And that person then is dedicated to that responsibility and coordinates between the entities. If we don't have that, it will not move forward. Sorry to cut you off.
Oh, no, you're fine. I was just, so is, are we talking about something that's greater than what Jett's already doing with the soccer and the ba- basketball programs that we have? Like something on like a much...
That's part of the conversation. Does Jett have the time and the capacity to do an expanded program? I don't know. We got to invet- involve Jett in that conversation.
Because I know the soccer program has grown tremendously and so has the basketball program. That the city, that the city does right now, but I didn't know if we're talking like on a bigger, grander scheme.
What are you hearing from, what are you hearing in terms of need?
Football is a big one in the fall. Obviously volleyball's, uh, one of those, soccer.
Okay, so adding, okay.
Yeah, we, I think we have, uh, football is formed out. We have basketball, I think that's hosted here, but could be expanded with the additions of our new facilities that are up and coming. Like there are, there are opportunities here to expand and grow and it might outgrow this one person that's, um, that's working, um...
Well, and if it does outgrow, you have, I mean, usually if you're going to join a team, there's a, there's a fee. I mean, there's, it's not like this is revenue, uh, wasteland of revenue either. Um, you know, and, and not to mention, it's not all you. You can have a rec director and have some adult leagues and things like that as well.
Pickleball.
Pickleball. I didn't want to say pickleball, but yeah.
Pickleball, swim if there's a pool. I mean, there's so many other opportunities. We have, you know, we could have tennis. We could have, I mean, there are things that are on the horizon where we could say, hey, these are opportunities for our community. Why not invest? Why not work together? It, it's asinine not to, because again, this is our community and we can work together. We just got to have somebody that's in charge.
Well, and another thing, uh, when we started the Meeks Pond, that was a joint venture between the Parwan City and the school district.
Right.
Uh, the fishing that was down there, the, the vegetables that we raised and gave to the care and share, you know, the recreation that was possible down there at the pond, that's the type of joint effort that started that pond. Was between the school and, and the, uh...
And the city.
And the city. Brought in the Heritage Foundation, brought in all kinds of people and...
But the other advantage that we have is if we have opportunities like this for the school to get involved and the school to support and parents have an opportunity for their kids here, we're going to, we're going to continue to build Parwan strong. Which is exactly what you discussed with the project at Meeks Pond or Creek or...
Mhm.
Right? But I have a multimillion dollar building coming. It's separate from my building. This gives you an opportunity and we as a community to work together to utilize the facility as built. Because I don't have to worry about classroom issues or safe, the safety, uh, issues are not completely gone, but they're minimal when we have one facility that's separate from my school. And so, there are other opportunities. I'm just telling you, it's coming. Let's do something. Let's build. And let's have an opportunity to work together for our youth programs. Again, I've heard from all of those programs. Little reg- wrestling was another one that I forgot. Baseball, softball. Like they all have these things. We get lights on the field, you know, we can run programs. When we host things in the schoo- in this town, it generates revenue for all of the businesses. And the more things that we do together, the more it's going to build. And it will pay for itself.
And an important com- an important component, as we discussed earlier this morning, you get an interlocal agreement in place. You realize the, there's times you're going to cost share O and M. There's times it's give and take. But if you have a good, it's like good fences make good neighbors. You have a good agreement and it helps two entities to work together. And there's not, you know, I shouldn't out Jeremy, but he called me the other day and said, are you okay if we use one of the bucket trucks to repair one of the lights on the field for the school district? So they don't have to bring a truck all the way. And I was like, Jeremy, of course. I mean, we've got to have a, a, a spirit of cooperation. Um, and, um, that really works well when you have a nice MOU that, that kind of makes everything clear as to responsibilities. Who's, who, who, who's the priority? What's the pecking order on this facility? In other words, who gets it first and who is, gets second pick? Um, who's responsible for maintenance? Um, who's responsible for the power bill? As we start talking about lights on the softball, on the softball fields and on the soccer fields, the question came up, that's a lot of power. Is the city just going to, you know, fork, is just, the city going to do all that? It's like, well, if we're going to rent the fields to a, a, somebody who comes in, there'll be the revenue to cover that. If the school is going to use that on a, on a, on a repetitive basis and they're going to use it in the evening, then we're going to have to have that in the MOU. School needs to help with the power if the city's not using, you know, just things like that. We either put it in an MOU or else it becomes a source of contention and we end up blowing up an agreement.
I've seen these resolutions where cities and schools hold each other harmless, but they're just as a pecking order. And there is a priority list and you have first option, second option, that kind of stuff. But then I've also seen joint ventures where we work together or we share costs. So, ultimately, it just comes down to how do we want to invest in the future with our kids and the programs that we have? Um, I think it's wel- worth doing. They're go- they're doing them anyway. Why not host them here if we have the stuff to do it? And I think now's the time for the discussion and this is why I, I thought this would be a good evening to come and talk about it. Any other thoughts? Sorry, I've kind of belabored it a little bit, but... Or does anyone have anything from the past, like, hey, we tried something, this didn't work, so we don't head down a road where, I don't know, the doors are closed?
I think next steps for sure for the city is, we need to establish a committee. Um, it's right in our ordinance. Um, we need to do it. And then have that committee start making some recommendations, um, to the council. And potentially look at hiring somebody or designating somebody. And, um, when the next season starts, have a plan and that committee can do some outreach with the school. Maybe we put somebody from the school on the committee or a couple of people from the school on the committee, on the city's committee. Um, Councilman Burton mentioned there's something that for the council to think from a budget and O and M perspective. It's, this, the way our ordinance reads is this committee is over maintenance of the parks and rec program. You could split it into two committees, but if you have a committee that is over maintenance of parks, you're talking budgetary. You're talking, um, potentially maybe even have two city council persons on it. Um, maybe we have, you know, our, our parks, um, I don't know what his title is, Justin, he'd be on that committee. Um, I mean, you want to have a committee that empowers and works, but doesn't go rogue. So it's got to be designed correctly and then it's functional. But at the end of the day, like Principal Bailey said, you got to have a person. Somebody that's going to coordinate with forty different volunteer coaches and it's going to have, run the calendar and run all, and, and deal with upset parents. And, I mean, that's not something a committee does well. I, that's why I think we have to solve the, um, the personnel side of it. We need to involve Jett. We need to decide, is that something that we can have Jett help with or do we pull off and go a different direction? And I would definitely want to make sure we in- involve Jett in that discussion. But I think the first thing to do is to establish a committee. I'll stop talking. I don't have a voice anyways.
And Principal Bailey, I don't know if now is the right time, but I know there still are questions about that, um, the community multipurpose building. Is there any aspect of that you could share with the council for them to kind of better understand that potential for the city to be involved in that facility?
Um, well, I guess the examples that I can give are in other communities where the city and the district have made a joint venture and then said, hey, we'll invest, um, in this facility under an MOU or some other type of thing where we have an expectation where you have like second rights to the facility or whatever that means, you know. After the school's done or whatever our use is, then the city has access to that facility. Um, they recently built one in Nephi that, um, I got some pictures from, from the superintendent over there. Um, it has an indoor football field, basically, uh, six basketball courts. The football field can be a soccer, it's a half a football field, but I think you can remove the courts and it'll be a full field. Has a weightlifting facility, two classrooms, a number of other items. I have some of the information if you want to come see it, but they've decided as a whole Nephi city that that's what they would do. And if you've been past, how many of you have been past the freeway and looked down at the school district where the high school is, that, next to the freeway? It's where their old parking lot was adjacent between the middle and high school. So they use it during the school day, those two, uh, buildings. And then in the evenings, then it's the cities and they, they run it and manage it, so, this, from what I understand. So I've seen that kind of stuff. Um, a number of people approach me all the time, hey, what's going to, we're never going to get this facility. Yes, we are going to get the facility. It was bonded and that bond unless something major happened, it's going to go through. And how big is it? And, I mean, that all is determined by cost of materials and, and all that kind of stuff, which you all know very well. Um, but it will meet the needs of the school and that's what it was bonded for. So, well cafeteria and gym space for the elementary kids so they don't have to go out in the wintertime and play, um, in the freezing cold and the snow. I say they go out and throw snowballs, but they wouldn't do that, would you guys?
Oh, they would never throw snowballs.
I'll teach you.
Yeah.
Never.
So, um, anyway, to meet those needs and then whatever we can put in there from there. Um, so, how big is it? We don't know. Um, it'll be determined. Now, the school district has just finished or will be finishing the Cedar High School upgrade. Um, they did an upgrade to their science section of the sc- of the building. The Cedar Middle School, they just are building on and they've just poured the concrete and now the walls are going to be going up. I think they're just waiting on the brick, so I think that'll start in January. They just bid out, uh, Canyonview Middle School for their addition. And now they're going to be bidding out the East Elementary School and then we're next. So, they held off on some of the projects just because costs were so high and they expected them to, to lower, I think, during the winter and they've seen that. So now they're kind of jumping on some of those projects. One of the major concerns that we have and we s- and it's still a concern with the district is the supply chain issues. So, for example, the, the district just added heating and air in our elementary school. But we can't get the panels to run the heating and air. They're like twenty-three months out. So, the units are there, they just won't be able to use them for another year and a half until we get the stuff. So, they're bidding out the things for the high school, to upgrade the high school, assuming that it will still be a couple of years before we actually receive the equipment to do all of the work. All the work's been done pretty much at the elementary, except they can't control the units because they don't exist.
Yeah, they can't turn them on.
Nope.
They're not going to leave them out there in the parking lot, are they?
Oh, no. Anyway, I, I just think is, it's a good time. I appreciate your time. Anyway, I, um, I just think is- it's a good time. I appreciate your time. Sorry if I took more time than it was needed. I just wanted to say thank you for what you've done for my kids and my school. And this is a special time of year. It's a time of year for families and celebration. I just wanna say Merry Christmas to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number sixteen. Oh, no, fifteen. Upcoming- bye, thank you. Upcoming land use seminar. And that will be, I think it's Dan, Justin?
It's Dan.
Okay.
We'll see how much I got left in the old wind pipes. Um, so we wanted to promote, um, there is a planning and zoning seminar, land use seminar, that is funded and put on by the, um, Utah Office of the, um, let's see. I wanna get this exactly right. How about I put my glasses on? Um, the Office of the Property Rights Ombudsman. That office is our go-to when the crap really hits the fan. The city gets into a big mess dealing with anything with land use. This is a state-funded group that we can call, we can get advice, we can get help as we work through issues either internally or with citizens that are doing things with their land. Um, they go around the state, funded by the state program, and they do these trainings. Um, and it's not just for government. It's- it's cosponder- co-sponsored by the League of Cities and Towns, Utah Chapter of the APA, which I believe stands for Ameri- Something Planners, sorry. And the Real Property Section of the Utah State Board, Home Builders, State Salt Lake Board of Realtors. So this is a three-hour training. Um, we are encouraging our Board of Adjustments, our Planning Commission, our City Council, um, any of our staff that wants to, but it's also open for the public to sign up. The- if- if you are an attorney, an appraiser, a real estate professional, you- you can get three hours of continuing education credit for attending this. Um, and it's free and they give you a book. This book is probably, I would call it, maybe the bible of land use. Just real world, um, easy to read, not legal, advice and counsel on, um, citizen planners and city councils and zoning administrators on how to go and deal with these issues. Of course, we have our attorneys and we lean on them, but we've gotta educate ourselves and so they make this available. Um, the cool thing is, is they're coming to Parowan, they're coming to this room. I can't remember who gets credit. Somebody invited them.
Larry.
Larry invited them and they said, "Absolutely, would love to come to Parowan City and do this." Um, so we just wanna ma- announce that, let everybody know. We did send an email out to all of the people that the city wants to invite. But, um, it's January eleventh. It goes from five till eight. And, um, you do have to pre-register and that's because they wanna know how many seats have been quote-unquote "sold." It's free. So then they can then inv- and sell out those other seats for free to, um, anybody of these other groups that I mentioned. So if you're interested, um, and Callie so graciously said that she would help anybody who doesn't feel comfortable doing it themselves, like Jim, but the, uh, like Christian, um, it says details and registration there. That's the website, www dot utahlanduse.org slash seminars slash. And, um, you can go and sign up or if you wanna come by, Callie will help you sign up. And, um, having just gone through the class, it's great. Um, the main- the main people that do it, Craig Cull, he's an attorney and he's Utah very- Utah's very first property rights ombudsman. He's funny. They take a kind of a, um, controversial style and it's just real. And he just deals with it. You got a question? He doesn't wanna like become lawyer and answer specific questions, but- but he'll go- he'll just go anywhere. He has his order done, but, um, it's a really great thing. So anyways, just wanted to promote that and if you want a free book. That's what it is.
All right.
If anybody wants a flyer, there's extras. From the public.
And the time goes really fast. It's actually really, it's fun to be there and to learn. Um, as far as, so that's that on the agenda for that item. The next one is item number sixteen, extended stay at Painted Hills RV Park. And Casey Jones is here to answer, well, actually bring the topic up and then answer any of the questions that the council has.
Maybe real quick, I could give a- a quick preamble to this. Um, this was discussed in planning and- in the Planning Commission yesterday. Um, and- and he can certainly represent, um, his ask to the Planning Commission, which is going to be making a recommendation to City Council to potentially change the code. And if- if we do that, we'll have a- a public hearing and the whole deal. Um, and there's recommended language, which was voted on. There's nothing that can happen today other than just to discuss it and to hear kinda maybe the reasoning behind it, but it'll probably come on a future agenda. And it's totally legislative decision if the council wants to entertain the Planning Commission's recommendation. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for, uh, having me again. You're probably a bit tired of us. We come back very, very often, but, uh, just a quick update on the RV park. We- we were having supply chain issues as well. And I mentioned to the Planning and Zoning Commission last night that we actually finally did get our equipment and the power's on at our sites. And today we actually got our building up and- and lit up and it looked really nice when I drove down there to- to lock it up. So, uh, hopefully we'll soon be open. Um, I- I- I shared with the Planning and Zoning Commission last night just some talking points. Uh, I believe we- we gave you all a copy of those. If you'd like, I'd be happy to highlight some of those. If you've read through them and you'd rather just ask questions, I'm happy to, uh, to facilitate that as well. Do you- do you have a preference? Would you like me to go over this quickly and kind of some of the highlights? The- the reasons why we're here, or at least I'm here, my counterparts of one Santa Claus and the other had, uh, a- a- a child to go home to, so.
No, highlighting would be good.
Highlight's good. Okay, so our, uh, um, our request is to actually, um, either change the ordinance or allow a conditional use permit that would allow us to have stays of up to a hundred and eighty days or no longer than a hundred and eighty days. Um, currently the ordinance is fourteen days. Um, we have found, uh, as we've started to get reservations and have customers call us, that there's a large, uh, number that actually would like to have a stay longer than the fourteen days. Um, probably fifty percent of our requests are, we get one to two per week. Uh, their- their purpose or the reason for wanting to stay longer is there- there's a lot of different reasons. Some are building a home in Parowan and they just want somewhere to be able to stay while their home's being built. Others have temporary employment and they need a place to stay. Uh, several actually are working in Brian Head or they're here to enjoy Brian Head and they want a place to stay. Uh, a lot of them just want a base, uh, to be able to go out and explore and see what's the- the beauty in southern Utah, whether it's skiing or the national parks. Um, when we deny their request, they move on to other communities, largely the Cedar City. Um, our- our- our purpose really is to make sure we're complying with the- with the city's ordinance. But we really wanna, uh, uh, help our local businesses, build the city's tax base, make sure we're providing a neat opportunity for our customers, uh, and so that we all win. It- it- we- we keep people here and we keep their- their funding here in- in our local community. Um, it's- it's not really what we wanna do in a significant way because our financial model- model is much more lucrative if we just rent on a nightly basis or on a weekend basis. Our rates are much higher, so financially it's better for us. Not to do this in a pervasive way, but we feel like there's a niche of customers that we'd like to take advantage of, so again, so that we all benefit. Uh, we're- we're- we're probably looking somewhere between twenty-five and thirty percent we would make available for this longer stay. Um, we wanna do everything we can to mitigate any impact upon residents near our parks. So we would always have those that are of a long-term nature. On the westmost side, closest to the hu- to the freeway would be where we would actually play. So today we have four rows. If we continue to expand, which we hope to down the road, we would push that farther west. Um, and then in our policies and procedures, or policies and rules, we would have very specific things, uh, to- to help control and mitigate any impact for those longer-term stay. We did a bunch of research. We called lots of community or municipality cities in the area. We called Cedar City, Beaver, Milford, Delta, Fillmore and Enoch. Uh, we found that all but Enoch did not have any kind of a restriction for long-term stay. Uh, Enoch just recently passed a- a- a change in their ordinance, which limited- it limits it to a hundred and eighty days. But all of the other communities do not restrict, um, extended stay at an RV park. Um, and again, at the end of the day, we're- we're- we're hoping- hopeful that we can either change the- the ordinance or to get a conditional use permit that would allow that. Uh, but I- we're sh- we're- I'm kinda here standing today to help understand what your concerns might be and what the process might be for being able to progress towards that. At Planning and Zoning yesterday, I don't know, Larry, if you wanna share any thoughts, but, um, the- the recommendation was probably that we modify the ordinance, uh, with, uh, items of language, but then that we would all- we would likely, one of those changes would allow there to be granted a conditional use that would, uh, be attached to the RV park specifically. But, um, I still don't fully understand the process and how we, uh,
I can weigh in on that a little bit. Potentially move forward. The- the reason is because RVs in a certain zone, RV parks in a certain zone is permitted. So.
Permitted meaning allowed, not.
Allowed.
Yeah.
And the fourteen days is just hardcoded. So the- the conversation was get rid of the fourteen days, but make the use a conditional use. So anytime an RV park wants to be requested in a- in the zones that we allow them, it would go from a permitted use to a conditional use, so that, um.
On the chart, it'd go from a P to a C.
Meaning anytime, and- and so in your conditional use permitting process, you're gonna put restrictions on that park. So that was.
On the conditional use, we could say ninety days or seventy-five days or.
Right.
Whatever the council decides.
And you have to be somewhat careful in this because you have to identify, and this is something we'll learn in this meeting. Well, ha- you have to identify a, um, a negative impact that you're now mitigating with the conditional use permit. And we would identify what that negative impact is, most likely as we don't want permanent residents living in a quasi-mobile home park. And the way that we would conditionally mitigate that would say, "You have to have rules and we're gonna establish those rules as thirty percent of the park could be this, uh, fifty percent of the park, um, one hundred and eighty days is a max. What happens when they leave the park? Is there a cooling off period?" Those are all the details you could then put in the conditional use permit. Or, and this was Christian's idea, um, we could actually just add in there, um, I don't wanna put words in your mouth. What was your idea, Christian, that you actually just put a conditional?
Well, I- I thought that we could just leave it as permitted and change the- the date from fourteen days to twenty-nine to take advantage of that transient room tax.
Yep.
That was my question. That's gonna be my question.
Um, and then, uh, add the conditional use part to the RV park, uh, ordinance, where you would say, um, you can have, uh, anything above twenty-nine days, uh, on these conditional uses and you have to meet these certain requirements and have mechanisms to ensure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. And if they've got people that are just playing hopscotch, that would be justification to pull the conditional use permit and have a cooldown period. There was some discussion of thirty days. There was some discussion of, uh, the- the remainder of a year. You could have up to a hundred and eighty days in a year. Uh, so there was a lot of different discussions, but, uh, that was- that was kinda my position.
And- and the key is that we don't want a permanent residence and we're not going to allow any kind of permanent structure. Um, and we'll have policy specific to that and- but- but- but we also don't want the hopscotching where, okay, we're just gonna move them to the next space and they can start the hundred and eighty days again. So we're quite happy to- to entertain ideas that you might have or requirements that you might have that would- would- would help us enforce or make sure that we're not hopscotching, but- but, uh, cooling off. Now, we- the other thing is we don't wanna tell a customer, "Okay, you've stayed here for a hundred days. You can't ever come back." Because if they're a great customer and they're- and- and they're here and they're spending money and helping our businesses and building our tax base, we- we wanna encourage them to come back. But- but at the same time, we wanna make sure that we're not doing anything that- that- that would demonstrate a permanent residence of any kind.
Casey, on- on that, can I comment just real quick? Cause I watched the meeting last night on it and, uh.
Yeah.
The- you commented you were a little negative on the- not negative, you were, um, concerned of the hundred and eighty days and coming back and not be able to allow them to come back. But my thought was on- what had come to me is, yeah, they'd let them come back, but maybe have the fourteen-day restriction until that year mark. Cause you do have your seasonal workers or, you know, that wants to stay or a seasonal thing and then they come back through. They'd like to stay again, but maybe do a shorter time. That's just something I was thinking, you know, so.
So allow the hundred and eighty or whatever that is and then you can come back for maybe fourteen.
Then, yeah, come back.
Gotcha, okay.
Come back a fourteen day or, you know, just let them, you know, so you're not.
You're not saying you can't come back.
Yeah, you're done. You're- you're outta here until next year.
Yeah, I like that. I like that.
You know, something to- you still encourage them to come back, but yet, you know, we don't want you to stay another hundred and eighty days that term, you know.
Yeah, I like that.
I just an idea.
I like that.
So to be clear, where it stands as of right now, um, this is Land Use Code, chapter fifteen. Um, the- the Planning Commission has made a recommendation to have a public hearing and review the code and has recommended language. Um, and at the end of the day, it becomes a legislative decision. Um, even if that is, "Nope, we don't wanna touch the code" or "We like this, but we would like to maybe modify that" after- especially after listening to the public, if there is a public input. And, um, and then that can be looked at. But that's where it stands as of right now. They did make a recommendation, a positive recommendation, to look at the code and have some recommended language. The next step is a public hearing. Um, if- and- and then- and I mean, and the ball goes to the council and the council has the decision point at that point. But that's where we stand.
A question.
Yeah.
You know, the, uh, the TRT tax?
Yeah.
That ends at twenty-nine days.
Twenty-nine days, right.
So if they stayed past the twenty- if we did in fact allow extended stay, what's the tax im- implication?
That would gonna be my question.
How do- do we?
Yeah.
We- if- if we lose the TRT, do we pick up sales tax or do we pick up some other tax?
So there's- the state law.
Always sales tax. Sales tax is always there.
And so your space rental is a sales- that would generate sales tax.
I mean, if- if, right now, what we're gonna generate is we're gonna generate fourteen days on somebody who wants to stay a long time. You're gonna generate fourteen days and then you're gonna kick them out of the park. That's fourteen days of DRT municipal tax and sales tax. If you make an allowance that can go bigger than that, you're gonna generate TRT tax up to day twenty-nine and then it doesn't have to be collected after that point. And if I'm a concerned person, I say, "I don't have to pay the tax after that, cause I'm not transient anymore, but sales tax is still charged."
We could make it a- a condition of long-term stay that you continue to pay the transient tax.
And I don't- I don't know the realities.
Now, we will- there- maybe there's some things we should delve into and understand ramifications, but.
All I know is that- is that the tax has to be applied for a transient stays of twenty-nine days or less. That's what the law says.
It has to.
It has to. And so anyways, my point being, right now, you're gonna kick them out of the park and- and some people are just gonna come for a couple days anyways. So only in the case where they wanna stay longer, um, what does that look like? But after twenty-nine days, they don't have to pay that portion of the tax. But after twenty-nine days, they don't have to pay that portion of the tax.
It would just be sales tax from twenty-nine days on. Which is still good. It's not as good, but it's still good.
Yeah.
Well, sales tax, and it's rest, they're, they're gonna-
And they're gonna buy groceries and buy gas.
They go grocery shopping and restaurants.
Yeah.
Because they're living in, in, in an RV, they don't have a full kitchen and all that stuff. I mean, there's that impact as well, but-
Yeah.
Does the council have any questions?
I just wanna make sure that the city is held harmless, that, you know, that we're not losing out on the TRT, and, and I'm, I, I'm a little-
That's where I was coming from, too. Like, that was basically my only concern with changing the ordinance was exactly what you're bringing up.
Well, I'm concerned, too, that we need to, and maybe the conditional use can mitigate it, but we don't want, uh, long-term to be long-term, you know?
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Yeah, because in, uh, uh, the zone that it is, uh, what is it, uh?
Highway services.
Highway services, permanent residence is not allowed in that zone.
Correct.
It has to, the, it has to be in general commercial, or one of the other ones. So, are we gonna get in?
The beauty of the conditional use permit is when the conditions are not being followed, city pulls it. It, it's a very easy mechanism to, to deal with and non, and I don't mean this, the legal, technical way, non-conforming, but a property that is not playing by the rules, you pull their conditional use permit. Um, that, that's the beauty of, of doing it with the conditional use permit.
But does it, does it, uh, does it open the floodgates to other people wanting conditional use that maybe is not in the best interest of the city?
No.
Or ca- or is it case by case, we can?
Yeah, it's case by case, that's the, that's the whole point of the conditional use.
They can't come and say, well, you treated these guys different than you're treating me.
With the conditional use permit, you can treat them different.
But you have to have a good reason.
You have to have your reasons.
Right.
And they can't be fake. I mean, they have to be, in this case, we're concerned, it's right near this thing, and we're concerned of the impact on that. So therefore, this RV park that now wants to go in, sorry, we're gonna hold you to fourteen days. This RV park has, shows the different business model, they're located away from that same, you know what I mean? With the conditional use permit, you're mitigating negative, and, and I asked the guy in this meeting, I said, what is it that you're mitigating? Remember that? And, and he said, any negative impact on the city or the citizens that is not, that's not fake, it has to be something that's quantifiable and real, and you can then put conditions upon them. Now, if you can't put any conditions to mitigate, to mitigate those things, then you don't have to grant a conditional use permit. But as long as you can put conditions on it, then you have to grant it. So we're gonna grant a conditional use permit in most cases, but we are able to then tweak the terms.
So we can take his Painted Hills RV Resort policy and rules and place that in our conditional?
Yeah.
Or, or require the business to have something like that.
Well, yeah, I mean, but they've got theirs.
Yeah.
Mhm.
So we put that in the conditional use and say,
Yep.
live by it, or we're gonna pull the permit.
Well, my thinking, this is my thinking, when there's, when he was talking about, you know, yeah, some people are gonna stay a hundred and eighty days, or whatever they want. And if they can't stay there, are they, you know, it's a control, I don't have in a control environment that's got rules and regulations, or whatever. But are they gonna go instead of there, are they gonna go to somebody's backyard and stay there, um, behind somebody's, you know, power, and hooking off their, you know, that we have no control on, that we don't have policing and stuff like that?
Well, we should, that can, that's against the ordinance.
Yeah, but there's several homes in town that-
I know there are, and that's what we need to ensure.
I would rather, and then he was only doing, let's say, you know, seventy, thirty, seventy for the fourteen day, the thirty for the longer term, or eighty, twenty, whatever he was, you know. I mean, that's just something I'm throwing out, I just, you know, but I think-
And those types of terms could be incorporated into conditional use.
Exactly.
So we would not ex, we would not go beyond thirty percent, or, or whatever, we all feel most comfortable.
So we're not losing out the whole hundred percent, so if you go a hundred and eighty days, the whole hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but-
And I think it'd be interesting to know what their, how our residents feel about it, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think, one of the things that, because we had a public hearing when we changed, when we annexed and brought that in. Because we changed it to high, I mean, highway services.
Mhm.
And we had that input, and all of that, uh,
And there, there was a big, there was a lot of-
They, there were lots of people that had concerns.
Yes.
And most of those concerns, at least generally, are covered in your rules and procedures. You know, there was, there was some concern about highway traffic, about long-term stays, in fact, they talked about that. You know, and, and how, how that was gonna impact Parowan. And I think we need to make sure that while not making roadblocks so big that they can't get over them, we need to make sure we protect Parowan, Parowan City and Parowan residents, of which these guys are. I mean, they live here, so I mean, but I, the conditional use, I, I think that's more the way to go than changing the ordinance, 'cause-
That's what I was just gonna say, if we do just a conditional use permit, do we have to go and change the?
You gotta change, you gotta change the code to even create the mechanism of a conditional use. 'Cause right now, it's clear, it's permitted and fourteen days. So in order to then establish a conditional use process, we do still need to modify the ordinance.
And I would, it, I would modify the ordinance to at least go to twenty-nine, so that you always maximize your ability to collect transient tax.
Yeah, I think, I guess we could do that, up to the twenty-nine days, and then-
And then add a provision for conditional use.
For conditional use, yeah. And tha- and that's what the, kinda the recommendation was last night, I believe.
And you would be happy with that?
I, i- if, if, with twenty-nine and the, the potential for conditional use, and then we figure out what, what the conditions would be, yeah, absolutely, we'd be happy with that.
'Cause we don't wanna make you angry.
No, I know.
I mean, we wanna do what's best for Parowan's residents.
Yeah, we do.
No, we don't.
He's gonna yell at me and just-
Well, I don't want to make anybody angry on purpose.
Then you're in the wrong job.
Yep.
You gotta make everybody mad at you.
Oh, believe me, you should see my phone right now. Um, back to what I was saying, though, is that if that would work, if we would change, potentially change that to twenty-nine days, put an thing in there for a conditional use permit, um, then we could work that out.
Your public input and figure out what we-
Yes, so that we are still taking care of the residents of Parowan, so that they know what's going on. Um, and it's still ca- taking care of a business that we have here in Parowan.
So, I would just say that, just so you know, I mean, just to bring us back to, to center, there is a recommendation with specific language, and it doesn't say twenty-nine days, but it says of a transient nature, which means roughly the same thing. Transient defined by Utah State Tax Commission is twenty-nine days or less. But that's what's, that's what's in the recommended language, and then adding the conditional use per- so that's what's in the language, which I would think you would want to at least have a public hearing on the language that's came with a favorable recommendation. And then, if you wanna change something, then you go through that process. Um, if you say, yeah, thanks Planning Commission, you guys are the experts, but we would really, we're only gonna approve this if it says this, and then I'm not sure if that has to go back to them, or if they can just do that. I know that if you do it wrong, you've, you've, haven't followed code, and maybe Christian could weigh in, maybe he, putting him on the spot, as I am likely to do, but-
No, you could. Um, what you would do is you could either say, we're gonna do a massive overhaul, and then you would wanna send it back to Planning and Zoning, and then come back.
With directions.
Yeah, and then come back. Or you can say, look, this is essentially the format, um, and we're gonna make some tweaks here, and here, and here. Um, and they're not too big, then you could just have them vocalize those tweaks so that everybody's present, knows what's going on, and-
And, and give the public, in the public hearing, a chance to comment on that. That's the whole point. When you're gonna change the law, you've gotta give the public a chance to comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if it's not something major, you know, if it's just like, well, we would like it to be like this instead, then you'd be fine to do it that way.
But we, don't we meet and make the changes, and then present the amended, if, if it is amended to the public?
You, you need to do a public impact statement, and then have the public hearing, um, and, and then after the public hearing, then the council decides where to go from there.
So there, there keeps patiently waiting and raising her hand, do you wanna say something? Sure.
Um, so, I just wanted to, um, first of all, apologize, because, um, I made a dig last night, um, saying that at least Sportsman's RV Park has trees, and I apologize for that, that was not, um, appropriate. Um, the, oh, sure, yes. Um, last night, I was taken back and was surprised, because I actually went into the meeting thinking that Planning and Zoning was not going to be looking favorable on this. Um, and I just wanted to make sure you knew that, yes, Planning and Zoning voted in favor, but it was not unanimous. I held out. And I don't think I was really verbalizing my concerns. And the only way I could think, I was thinking about it all day today, I even watched the, the thing again during, uh, work. I have a business in town, when I am working, I had to, you know, I'm working out of my home, and with that, there are rules. Those rules are, I cannot hire employees, only people that live in my house can work for my business. And I did that knowing that. It, when I installed my equipment, the next day, I did not come to ask for permission to change the rules. My only concern is, they just got their power on. We don't know what this is going, and how this is going to impact our town. Favorably, or negatively, we don't know how it's going to, um, tax our resources, the police, various, the traffic, there's, this is an unknown, large business that is coming to Parowan. And so, I would hate for us to release the cat from the bag, and then have to try to wrangle it back in later. So my thing that I don't feel like I communicated well last night, is that I'm not against it. I'm saying, let's see what this business does and how it impacts our town, before we start giving extra things. And so I just wanted to clarify that and apologize. Okay?
Thank you.
Ultimately, this is just to, to kinda bring the coun- council, make the council aware of the upcoming, I guess, discussion, public hearing. Um, there's no, nothing to be voted on, or certainly, we gotta be careful, we don't have that public hearing now, that's not published, but anyways.
Dan, at what stage in the process does the actual verbiage have to be available? Is that for the pu- public hearing, or is that after there's input from the public hearing?
So, um, the public hearing, and Callie can weigh in on this, um, needs to state the actual change to the code that is being presented, which, again, is why I'm saying that's important, that that's what, and it wasn't unanimous, thank you. The, the aver- the, the majority vote from the Planning Commission was to send favorable recommendation to change the code in a certain way, which that is, that's, that's specified. So that's what would go in the public hearing, um, notice, so that the public can see how the law would change if the council were to just approve it without making any changes. And so the public can see that, they can read it, they can think about it, they show up to the meeting, and the impact of it is discussed. This is what we think this would, would do, um, if we changed the code, and that's an arbitrary thing. Obviously, you try to be as transparent and think about all the good and bad, and then you let the public talk. So, that's kinda how that process works. Um, Callie, did you wanna weigh in on, okay. I don't know if that answers your question.
All right.
Are you gonna be nice to me? Well, I don't know. Larry Zajak, Planning and Zoning, Parowan City. So, ju- there is one more step there, um, if we were to get to a spot where we actually decided to go forward and change code, that's like, you know, you have the public hearing and you change the code, then the applicant is gonna come back to Planning and Zoning and request the conditional use permit. And it's at that point in time where Planning and Zoning would consider the restrictions and mitigations, and, and that sort of a thing. So, just so we all, we're all clear on, on where that goes. And then once the conditional use permit, once we've made a recommendation, then that comes back to the council. There would not be a second public hearing, that's-
So, so the council per-
And then you talk about their specific park.
So, the public hearing would be in the Planning and Zoning, or would it be here?
No, the way our, the way our code is written right now, it's contrary to state code. State code says Planning and Zoning will do that, but-
Okay.
Our city code says that, uh, the city council will have the public hearing.
And it's important, like Larry was saying, that the public hearing is not dealing with them. All it's dealing with is a change to the code.
Right.
It's not a public hearing on evil, I mean, not evil water anymore, although that was the best. Painted Hills. It's not about, the public hearing is not about Painted Hills. It's about the change to the ordinance.
Only, only.
That's correct, 'cause that would apply to all, all RV parks.
Because that would apply to all of it. It's changing the ordinance, it's not dealing with evil water, Painted Hills.
So say that we changed the ordinance, like, we had a public hearing, we did whatever, then they would go back to Planning and Zoning.
Get the conditional use permit, and then-
But then that would actually come back to us to approve the conditional use, so we could see.
So our code reads that certain conditional use permits are approved or denied by Planning Commission, but specifically RV parks and planned unit developments, conditional use permits have to come to the city council.
Usually, anything that deals with, with housing has to come-
Not like I, not that I like to micromanage every single thing that goes on in the city, 'cause that is not my job. But something like that, I would like to look at that, just to make sure that-
The condition?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
You'll see that, it'll come back here.
Like, I would like to look at that before that was all-
White code.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does the latter there, in that case, the, the approval of the conditional use require a public hearing, or is that just a, a-
No, no, that would just be, that would just come back to us.
That's why I wanted to make sure that-
And Heather has another comment, you might wanna stay standing there in case she-
I just wanted to, um, I just wanted to point out that from my understanding, a conditional use permit, if that happens, that stays with the property. So, although the argument has been that they're Parowan residents, so they're going to look out for us, they could sell ten, twenty, whatever, down the road. That conditional permit would stay with that property, and if you have some corporation who, you know what I'm saying, like, there's, there's-
Yeah, but they would still be held to the same conditions that they did.
Yes, they would, absolutely. I'm just saying that if the argument is, is that they're fantastic, great, you know, residents, so they're gonna take care of us, that conditional use could bite us in the butt later.
No, no.
Not necessarily.
The conditional use is a protection for us, is for the city. The conditional use protects Parowan City.
Right.
That's the number one.
And if they don't follow the rules, we're gonna pull that.
Okay, that's okay.
We would, we would just pull it.
I just wanted to make sure that you, that it, yes, thank you.
And Heather, if you, if you wanted to apply to hire an employee, change that ordinance, that would be wonderful, to provide another job in town.
So-
She really is.
While we're making those points, let's just be clear about the conditional use permits. If a property changes hands, that conditional use permit can be reviewed and changed.
That's what I was saying, can you put the verbiage in there to come back and re-address it, or reapply, or?
It's almost standard practice that it, that when you-
Okay, that's what I was-
Well, that's good to know, that we could, Larry, you guys could draft that all in there and make our job easy, and then we could just look at it, and we'll be like, I don't think-
It says in our ordinance that the conditional use can be reviewed at any time.
Yeah, and that's correct.
But we, if the city councils, if a new city council came in, legally, the new council could take a look at all of the conditional uses issued by the city.
Pull what they want.
And pull what they want and change it and do whatever. So the conditional use protects the city. Am I, am I correct, Chris?
Yeah, they could come in and pull it so long as the justification is not arbitrary and capricious.
They could. And capricious.
Those are the, those are the key words.
Those are your key words.
Those key words are in this book a lot.
Yep.
So, shameless plug.
I'm gonna order everything I can.
Arbitrary and capricious.
So, so what are the next steps then, Dan? What?
Well, the next step is to put it on for a public hearing, um, on the next actual.
So January fourteenth?
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll come in then and, and actually.
Watch the agenda to make sure that it gets on.
Okay.
And it's, you know, theoretically, it could be, you know, put onto a future one, but that's, that's the plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
All right, now we're moving to work, meeting item number seventeen, water ordinance changes. Dan Jesson.
Okay, so real quick, this is something that was started with this body and it boomeranged, um, went to water board. Um, we were, we were aware that when the water ordinances were changed in February, not all of the language that we wanted to remove was removed. So we went to the water board, they made a recommendation, yeah, we wanted to go ahead and, and get, get that fixed. Um, language needs to be changed in two chapters, seven, which is the, the code on utilities and specifically talking about water in seven dot ten and so forth. And then also to be consistent, we needed to change some stuff in fourteen, which is a land use code. So just as a matter of, um, oh, A, if it's land use, it does have to go through planning commission, but, um, so nothing was changed, but it did go to planning commission, so they understood it. And, um, now it's coming here and again, this would have to be with a public hearing. I would suggest we do it with the same advertisement, the same costs as the public hearing that we're considering that we just talked about. But essentially, what we're doing is we're gonna remove all reference to a water development fee. Requiring somebody that comes in and does a lot split or a subdivision or an annexation, they have to bring the city water with a priority date on or before December thirty first nineteen forty nine. And so that's what this does. So there's not any surprises. Um, I can answer any questions. But ultimately, it'll come back, but this is what we wanted to do.
The water board was concerned about the ambiguity that was still in the ordinance, cause we put the priority date of, uh, nineteen forty nine and made that, but we forgot to remove the part that said that a developer could buy water from the city by paying a water development fee. We don't have water to sell them, so we need to eliminate that out of the ordinance. But keep and make very clear that they have to bring in water with a priority date prior to nineteen forty nine.
Groundwater.
Groundwater that is depletable according to the state. And it, it has to, it has to benefit the city. So that we're protecting the city. Because if in fact, oh, let's see, Rochelle, you're probably, well, you and the mayber- mayor may live that long, but in sixty years,
Well, I would be a hundred and something. I've maybe seen I'll by then.
But anyway, uh, and the water board was very clear on making sure that that language was cleared up and cleaned up to ensure that somebody couldn't come and say, well, I'll pay the fee. Well, we don't have the water to sell you, so we would need to get back.
So we need to change the.
Take it.
You're telling me my plot's not gonna have green grass over it. It'll have.
Nope, it'll be dirt.
Back in the old days, that's what it was.
I know.
The, the cool thing about this change to the ordinance and I tip my hat to ev- to the, the whole, the city as a whole, everybody involved, this makes growth tied to water that's available in the aquifer. We can't outgrow our own aquifer as long as this is our policy.
And that's exactly right.
Now, we're only a portion of the valley. Um, just for reference, just for information, a point of information, the county has also recently adapted code that says any subdivision in the county must show the county as part of its subdivision requirements that they have sufficient water that is good for fifty years. They didn't tie it to a specific day because it's different in Parawan than it is in Cedar, than it is in the Escalante Valley or, or otherwise known as Burl Enterprise. So they wrote the code that just says, if you're gonna develop in the county, you have to have water that's good for that amount of time. But the county doesn't actually get into water business as far as any of that. They just, because you can have a private water company for an individual subdivision in the county. But this also forces them to make sure that that subdivision, in other words, you couldn't have a, a developer go acquire some water that's nineteen, what's the latest stuff? Seventy or something in the, in this valley. Hurry and throw in a subdivision. You have a bunch of unsophisticated in terms of water buyers that buy houses. Next thing you know, their water is gone and they're gonna be looking around at every close local government to say, how did you let this happen? You gotta fix this. So the county's ordinance isn't exact, but it kinda matches the city's and that protects the valley to not grow bigger than the aquifer can, can do. And it, it's a kind of a natural constraint on growth. It's not its intent, but it's one of the results.
All right, any other questions on that item? All right. Um, we skipped over eighteen. I think that's still on the screen. We're not talking about that tonight. So nineteen is reports, updates, old business, follow up from elected officials and staff. We can start on this then, sorry.
Oh, that's fine. Uh, we had, uh, airport board meeting on the fifth. Uh, it was a, uh, telephone conversation with, uh, Judd Hill from Armstrong. Uh, went over the, an update on the, uh, capital improvement projects for Parawan Airport. Uh, a lot of good information. Dan was there. Uh, basically, we're online right now for the major runway, uh, make sure, rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation.
It's, it's not a rebuild, it's a rehabilitation.
But it's significant.
Significant. They're gonna have, yeah, it's, it's.
Like almost three million dollars.
Three million, two eighty, or two million eight hundred and sixty eight thousand. Uh, that's to begin, uh, this year. Right, Dan?
Twenty-three?
This fiscal year, we'll start bidding that out in.
Uh, in February.
February. And, and, and just to add to that, um, these projects are awesome. We get nineteen to one on our money. Um, most of this money comes from the FAA. The city has a small portion of that three million.
For that two million, or almost three million, our portion, uh, is about a hundred and thirty-four thousand.
But that's already earmarked.
That's already, that's budgeted, correct, Dan?
Well, I was talking to Judy. Um, I know we have the money sitting there.
I know we have.
I don't know if it's budgeted, so we may, we're gonna have to amend the budget regardless because we're gonna have to show all of the grant money coming in and all of the construction expenses going out.
I think I'm, I'm almost one hundred.
I know the money is available, our portion, but I don't know if it's budgeted.
Uh, also, there was an update, uh, on the Southwest or SWCA subcontractors of, of, uh, Armstrong Consultants. They had a biologist sit out there for several days and came to the conclusion that, yes, there are deer on Parawan's Airport. Cost them about a hundred and something thousand dollars, but it is now official.
Like, I could've told him that.
The federal government now believes that there are, or there are deer on Parawan's Airport, which is.
Hmm, gladly clarified that.
We go watch Rock Ground My House every morning.
Becau- as funny as it is, as funny as it is, that right there opens up a ton of money for Parawan's Airport. Had we not gotten that designation.
Yep.
The money that we had hoped to get to put up a wildlife fence would not be there. That designation opened up a ton of money for Parawan's Airport.
Did they count the prairie dogs too?
That's a whole nother ballgame. We still have the.
Hey, they're taking those off the endangered list, did you know?
No, they're.
Not yet.
They're probably watching it.
But, or addressing it.
Yep.
Okay, but, yeah.
But we still have the kill permit or the, uh, humane.
Taking, taking.
Humane relocation.
The verb is taking.
Strike that from the record, the kill.
Potato, potato, it's the same thing.
They're relocating him.
Yes.
I'm gonna be.
Sending the little buggers to someplace else. Also, uh, and this was, this was new to me, uh, not, I'm the only non-aviator on that board and so, uh, recent installation of the vitro tower system, which was amazing. You can get on your phone, a pilot can get on his phone.
How do you know this?
That they showed me. They had a phone, they showed me.
You got, don't you see a cellphone?
No, I do.
Anyway, you can, you can pull up this app and the, the tower was paid for by the state. It's out on the airport. You can pull up an app on your phone and see every single airplane in the sky around you. Just like, I mean, it's video game one over.
Are you going to get a phone now so you can download said app?
No, I don't need it, but.
I'm impressed you're talking about apps and.
I wrote it down.
I'm very impressed.
It's in my notes. But anyway, Dan, anything that I've forgotten on that?
No, um, the only other thing about that is it will help, cause it odd, it's connected to the internet, so the UDOT, the airport part of UDOT can, and FAA can monitor our traffic. And that helps them understand how utilized this airport is, so they can deep, continue to send money to us. Like if we're sitting out here and you're getting one plane a month and, um, you're gonna have a hard time getting funding. They're gonna see every one of these SUU helicopters, they're gonna see all these private flights with this automatic system, which we don't now have to do manual reporting or anything. So the advantage to us is that it will help justify continuing financial support.
Yeah, and Mick was saying that that is just gonna blow our numbers right out through the s- through the roof between, cause every time those SUU pilots come in, touchdown and take off, that's an aircraft. Every time they fly over and come down, helicopters is the same thing. And just like Dan was saying, airport funding is based on use, so the more use you can show, the more funds are available for, for our airport. Yes, any, any use.
They have to have their, I'm not gonna get the acronym right, but this thing that it tracks is voluntary. Most of the aircraft wanna have them on because if you suddenly go out, drop out of the air, then everybody knows what happened. But it is a, um, something that they can legally turn on or off inside their aircraft. Most of them have them on though. And so the glider would have to have that in order to be seen by the system.
But if there, if there, if there, uh, engine assist, that counts as a, as a, uh, powered flight. And the tow planes, of course, are, are, but, uh, uh, is there anything else I missed, Dan? That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, we had economic development meeting this week, but we didn't have enough for a quorum, so we didn't have that. And I don't know if Sharon wants to talk about the power board or not, or.
Maker.
I did, I did last time.
I know it was coming.
I did last time.
Are you done then?
Yeah, I'm done. I'll let you get it.
All right, we had the power board and the, the big thing is, is our rate study should be done in the middle of this month. So that will be very, very in- informational for us. And that, and then the other question. Oh, our bill comparison. I can't remember.
Joey, all right. Our, we got a little surprise, um.
Oh, yeah, now I, I know it.
Do you wanna take it? Well.
We, we used a lot of power.
We used a lot of power in, uh, August.
Dollar wise.
Dollar wise. We had to buy a lot of, uh, power in, especially in September because, um, it was hot and we're not used to that. And then some of the power stations have actually shut down, so we had to buy a lot of it on the market. Um, considerably, I mean, what, they had their, just in August or September, or excuse me, September of, uh, last year, we paid fifty-six thousand for it, uh, almost fifty-seven, uh, September this year, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, um, Jeremy's gonna keep an eye on that, but mostly it is because of that, but also there was, Hunter Power Plant is down a little bit there because of, uh, uh, there was a fire in one of the, uh, coal shafts up there that they can't get coal out of. Um, but they're also gonna, they are stockpiling coal so for the summer months of next year, so we do have enough to run there. And also IPP out of, uh, Delta, um, is having the same problem with coal. They're just not getting enough to, there to produce. I think they're only up thirty percent. So we are purchasing it on the open market, but we do have a break because we are part of the UAMs. Um, but that is, um, something that they, uh, is a concern. Um, so it's gonna get worse, I think, because when they start shutting pa- power plants down. Um, do I wanna talk, we did talk about, uh, tree ordinance, uh, cutting tree, where, where does it stop and start, um, on the property? Does a property owner take it from the property line, um, or does the pa- power, uh, Parawan City? Um, so we are looking at a, um, uh, a tree policy to what, uh, where that comes into play and stuff like that, so I think.
And, and the others, the, he went to, Jeremy went to other cities and most of them, if it's in your backyard, you have to pay. You can call the city, the city will drop your power line and then you have to trim your own tree. And that's probably, I, I would think that's the way we'll be going to for that, but every other city is that way.
Yeah, right now, we don't have a policy.
We don't have a policy right now, but we will probably go that way. And, uh, the reason why for the coal is not just the coal, is we can't get, not we, they can't get the drivers to drive the trucks to deliver the coal.
And train, they're having train transportation problems too.
Train.
Yeah. It's a, it's a mess.
And no water in Lake Powell, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
So this is one of the things I was gonna talk about. I'm not taking my turn now, but, but it's about power. So I've been trying to get up to speed as fast as possible to make sure I have my head wrapped firmly around this very, very, very important utility that the city manages. And, um, so I went with Jeremy to the IPA, um, annual meeting, which we are a, um, we are an owner of IPA. And they talked a lot, so they have the IPP plant, which is coal, and they're, they have already secured funding. They secured eight hundred million dollars, um, with very favorable bond, um, cir- circumstances. They struck exactly at the right wa- time when the market was right. And they are going to do the IPP renewed project, which is basically transition to natural gas. Coal is getting more and more regulated, harder to get, transportation problems, plus China's still buying coal and the, a lot of the exporters would rather sell it to China at a higher price than sell it to us locally. And if we have to pay that high price, then our power's more expensive. So there's a lot of reasons to consider other things, so the IPP renewed project is looking, is, is converting over to natural gas. Um, this is the plant in Delta. And they also have a really cool, um, the world is kinda watching this, um, no, I don't wanna talk too much about it, cause he presented about it last time.
Yeah, mhm.
Um, and that's the clean hydrogen, where they store the hydrogen in the salt under the ground and, but it was really cool to be there. Um, I wanna give Jeremy kudos. Um, a lot of the city's representatives at that meeting are city managers. Um, and every, but Jeremy's there, he's our representative and he represents us well. He's one of the. He's one of the, I think, obviously one of the better power supervisors, cause he knows what he's doing. Um, I need to know, at some point Jeremy may retire, he could get injured. I mean, we can't have Jeremy as a single point of failure. Um, I'm gonna go with him to UAMPS next week, but we're in good hands, we're well, um, managed as far as our power goes. And we don't actually get, most of the time, last year was the first, that we actually called power back from IPP. We own, we're an owner of that plant, but all that power gets sold at higher rates, which help IPP to California, who's desperate for power, because, I'm not gonna go into the politics. But when we need the power, when our other power sources, like, like they've discussed, are having problems, we get to call that power back. And so that was the first time it was done, was in twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
The period that just ended.
Actually twenty-two, it's actually this year.
Yeah. So it was the fiscal year that just ended in June. They had called power back.
But the prob- Yeah. But the problem is, you've gotta do it now for next year.
Next year.
And so you don't know what.
Right.
Temperature's gonna be like, so it's gonna be a miss. But also on Jeremy, just real quick, he does sit on one of those boards up there for UAMPS and.
Yeah. He's on the UAMP board?
Yeah.
And he's our representative at APP, um, with APP. So we're well represented.
Yeah. Where, yeah, good hands.
Any, any update on the nuke?
Up in, you know, up in.
Up in Idaho?
No.
No?
It's, it's, it's not.
Just sitting there.
Not dead, but.
Well, yeah, they, they want, they're, they're, they're really want to make a push on it. That's what it is. They, they need to get subscriptions or it's gonna die.
Not alive.
High support. Oh.
They, they.
Yeah.
So that's where it sits at. It, but they, that's their biggest thing right now, is subscription and doing the push and get commitments, hard commitments.
Well, if those prices keep going up, I, won't that push some of those cities on the, on the edge?
Yeah, but you also, yeah, the nuclear scares a lot of people, but so, and there was one other plant that he was looking at. Didn't we buy, or looking at, I can't remember. Do you remember, Dan, that he?
I remember having a conversation on the drive home. We drove up with Beaver City, their city manager and power supervisor. And they were kicking themselves for not participating in some project, because at the time we had surplus power, but we are involved in multiple projects.
Yeah, there's one that, that we're looking at, just put it.
It's down, it's down around, uh, Moab and that, wasn't it?
I think so.
Well, that one died, that one died.
I thought there was another one that there.
Well, so there was one, so, anyway, so we, Jeremy is really doing, looking, hard look, so.
Yep.
We just need to get more water. It's, I mean, I'm not sure about Lake Powell, but I know Lake Mead is thirty-five percent of their capacity. That's pretty bad. And I'm sure Lake Powell is, is so close.
Well, or, one good thing about it, they're finding all those mob, uh, down.
I know, you know, I can, I can actually remember when I first moved to Las Vegas, when the mob was there, that there was always people missing. And I think they're finding them.
Yeah, down at the bottom of Lake Mead.
Yeah. Now, the other thing I have is the library, they're gonna start the, the, taking the tile off and putting the, the metal roofing on. But today I noticed, you know, on, on top of the roof, it says Merry Christmas. That's right on the edge of the roof. And that's gonna have to come down while they take that tile down, so they can put the edging on it. But they, they're supposed to start maybe Monday, depending on the snow, if not Tuesday, and they'll be here all week for that.
Who, is that a chamber of commerce thing, or is that an us thing?
That was the city.
The city. So they might wanna wait until Tanner Edwards Roofing gets here and find out when they'll be up there working on that one and take it down for the day or when, whatever it takes. And that's all I have.
Michelle, do you wanna go first?
No, I'll wait and see what Dan covers.
Okay. Alright, so, I'm not gonna talk anymore on the Veteran's Day Assembly, cause PHS did a wonderful job. Um, Jennifer Terry said that the variety show went fantastic. Christmasing in the country wa- had a great turnout. Um, all the vendors were sold out. Well, she sold all of the spots for the vendors, not, the vendors sold all their stuff, sorry. Um, so that was great. Um, sub for Santa is in full swing. The donations were all, um, supposed to be in yesterday. Um, I think, and I didn't verify this with Jet, I text her, but she didn't text me back. I'm pretty sure she's looking for volunteers to help, like sort and organize. So if you want to be a volunteer and help sort, organize all of the stuff, just contact her. Oh, it does? Okay, fantastic. And, um, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Um, David Burton, are you still there? Councilman Burton?
Oh, I'm still here. Uh, with the current logistics, I don't have anything to say tonight. So, uh, but I do, if you can hear me, I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas, including all the townspeople. And pray and hope for everybody to have a prosperous, productive and, and a great new year that, and hope that we can all be healthy. So we look forward to seeing you again.
Back at you, David.
I'm gonna circle back around to Councilmember Downey.
One more, last night, planning and zoning, I wasn't able to attend, so I asked Callie, well, I asked Molly first and Molly, I talked to Callie. And we tele- well, we didn't televise, we were on YouTube. And I would like to make a proposal that we do that on planning and zoning, cause I think we'll get a lot of people in the community to watch it.
Put it on the agenda.
Next to, next to, next to city council, planning and the zoning is the next big committee in the city. And the more that we can get out there to the residents, the better it is. I, it was really, it was really good.
Well, and if I can say something on that.
Yes.
I mean, what do we have, what, what typically goes on in government? You go and make a change, you do everything you can to get it out there, and you make a change, and somebody will stand up and say, I have not known about this. So the more you can get that out there, and, and, and land use affects everybody in the city, maybe not everything affects every specific person. But I absolutely agree. And I've, I've heard Molly talk about how, how do we get it out there to know, so the citizens know what we're discussing? So they're not feel like they're blindsided when something happens. And I think that's a good way to do it. If people will watch it. It's about as exciting as watching paint dry sometimes in planning and zoning.
That's not a dig, Larry.
No, no, no offense to planning and zoning.
Mayor?
Good.
Zoom it, who would you zoom it?
I mean, not zoom it, just YouTube.
Broadcast on YouTube.
It's not YouTube last night.
YouTube.
Yeah, YouTube it. Oh, it's, you're thinking.
You're thinking.
It is actually.
YouTube.
YouTube.
Mhm.
Zoom is if we want to conference, if we wanna conference somebody in remotely, we could use something like Zoom, which we're not set up for, but I think we need to explore. Like, like Dave and I, we were actually talking, cause he's like, I need to call in. And I think we need to kind of maybe, one of these days tweak our audio video, so that we have better ability to have somebody remotely participate. Um, and that's not really hard. We just need to kind of look at it and have, um, oh, not audio video, who is it? Anyways, something we need to look at, um, cause there's times when you could have a guy like, um, in our airport board, Judd Hill. We were doing this whole thing by phone. We could've had him up here on, on TV, he could be presenting stuff remotely and not have to either have a poor audio connection, or even worse, drive down here and bill us for the time. So with a little bit of tweaking of some audio video, we could have some better capabilities there. But, you know, YouTube on that is just a ma- we already have that capability, it's just a matter of putting on the agenda and doing it, I guess. Guess it'd have to be on the agenda, but maybe not.
Yeah, and I'll have to definitely agree, cause this does not work.
We can hear you awesome, Dave. But I know it's one way.
I can reach everybody and sneak in their mic, so I could hear something, but that's okay. It wa- it was fun watching you, it was fun watching you.
It's. Okay.
Alright, you're on.
Okay, I've, I'm exhausted, my voice is done. I'm not gonna say a lot. But I, I do wanted to say, um, uh, there was a group of concerned citizens, requested a meeting, and we had a ad hoc c- committee, if you wanna call it that, wasn't an official committee. We involved public safety, um, Justin from the parks, and the mayor and myself and a couple concerned citizens. With the recent water in the Meeks Pond, um, there was a bunch of, what? Um, dinging around, my German teacher would've said, um, a bunch of, I don't know who, maybe kids, maybe adults, doing some dumb stuff. Including out on thin ice. Um, they threw construction barriers into the pond, um, just did a bunch of dumb stuff. So people are concerned that, you know, we could have somebody go fall to the ice and so forth, so on. Um, the decision was made administratively, and I negoti- I, I included Justin in the, in the conversation to put up some signs at Meeks Pond. Um, like fifty dollars apiece, that say, urban fishery, fishing allowed is ingrained with a check mark, no swimming, no boating, no, um, or do not get on the ice.
No swimming.
Um, no swimming, I already talked about, and no, um.
Abandoning animals.
Yeah, no abandoning animals. That includes fish, fowl, anything. And then it has a legal disclaimer, which Justin was good with. He's like, you gotta be careful, you talk about liability. Some things, if you do, you're gonna make it worse for yourself. And he was good, signed off on it. And we decided to put three there, one where is the main part, where people park, and then one on one another end. And then talking to Kelly, Kelly's like, yeah, we had people out playing ice hockey on the four bay. Could we put one at the four bay too? So, um.
They were fishing at the four bay. I saw somebody drill a hole in the ice up there. I saw them out there.
Ice fishing? Yeah. So, a- again, this is what we call an attractive nuisance, so to put up a sign that says, this is what's allowed, one thing, and this is what isn't allowed. And then a legal disclaimer, um, it's a no-brainer, so, um, anyways, just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
I, we had those up from the very, very first. We had those very signs.
Yeah. Yep.
Because of the very thing you're talking about.
Yep. And you're not gonna, you're not gonna fix stupid, and you're not gonna, um, but what you do.
I don't know if some of us get elected.
You're gonna help parents, huh, give them some ammo to use with their kids. Hey, kids, no, that's not allowed, you know, it's very, um, we talked about public safety, driving by, making it aware. We talked about, um, actually maybe putting up a camera. Um, cause again, when they're throwing stuff in and they're out on the ice, same thing, somebody falls through and drowns. Even if the city doesn't have liability, cause we put up a sign, it, that's gonna be a disaster for our community. So we need to, we need to monitor it, we need to watch it, and, um, that's, you know, there's ponds in towns all across the country. And, uh, we don't wanna not ever have anything because of any potential for liability, but we do need to manage it well. So this was, anyway, something that happened. And, um, that's all I wanna talk about.
Do you wanna talk about the update from Bowen Collins on the water study?
Um, Bowen Collins is moving along well. Um, they anticipate being done with the water portion of the update to the general plan, um.
By the end of the year.
By the end of the year. And then, um, they'll have a draft version of that, which we'll share with the city council, and then they're gonna shift to finishing the sewer portion of it. Um, of course, this is key for a lot that we do. This will be the basis that Impact Fee Facilities Plan and the Impact Fee Study will be based on. You have to identify the, the infrastructure that you need as growth happens. You have to forecast the growth. And then you figure out what the cost of that will be, so then you can then set your impact fee based on it. That's one of the reasons, not the only reasons, why we update our general plan.
And that sewer, they said they'd have the study to us by the end of the, of January. We'll be in plenty of time to get our report to the Division of Drink, of Drinking Water, that's due March of twenty-three. So we're in line to have that done and ready.
And this is important, cause as you know, our sewer treatment facility serves not just us, but Brian Head. And Brian Head is experiencing dramatic growth. And so we're gonna have some public, um, infrastructure upgrades, which we'll share. We talked about those inter-local agreements, based on use, you know, so we're, we're gonna have some work with Brian Head to figure that out. They have some capacity issues with the line that comes off the mountain. They're gonna have to figure out how to deal with that. Um, the portions that are combined, you know, anyways, all of this will be in the study. When it hits a certain, when we hit a certain population, you have to change how you treat sewer. Of course, there's all kinds of things. The water that's done with the sewer could potentially be recharged. That's not gonna be in this study, but anyways, lots of stuff going on as far as that goes. Um, the Transportation Master Plan, I, I mentioned earlier, is, is applied for a grant that will hopefully, we haven't updated our Transportation Master Plan since two thousand two. So as we get commercial development going in, and the best thing we have is a fuzzy map, which shows a corridor coming in somewhere. It's really hard to hold a developer to, you have to set aside the corridor for that, cause it goes through your property when it's really outdated and hard to read. So hopefully, Cleve applied for this last year. Um, we, we employed Jones and DeMille to help write the grant, and we returned down to UDOT grant. Um, hopefully they give it to us this year. Anything else that I'm forgetting?
Um, feasibility study for the pool.
Feasibility study for the pool was approved in the last commission council meeting. I'm gonna go home and get after myself for saying commission. I'll get out of the habit. And, um, since then, we were made aware that there are companies that will, that will do, cause remember we were concerned that the feasibility study was maybe more than we needed? And the price tag was a big price tag. We've since found a couple of companies that will do it for a lot less, and I'm waiting on their bid. We're hoping to be in the ten to fourteen thousand dollar range instead of twenty-nine fifty. So I should have those bids back soon. Um, the, it was approved to do a feasibility study. We know what we want it to do. I don't think we need to bring it back to the council if we can get it done for a fraction of the cost. We'll just award the lowest bidder, that is gonna provide what we actually need. Again, that's the financials, the pro formas, the estimates, and then we'll, we'll move forward with that, um, quickly, so, yeah. That's all I can, that's all I have.
Okay, I just didn't wanna.
I'm glad, that was good.
Um, so, few things happened over the last couple of weeks, this last week, um, due to concerns of our citizens about ordinance enforcement. And that weighing heavily all the time on our minds. Um, I, um, we had a more recent one that was just a little more pointed. And I had been asking if we pull together ordinance enforcement meetings with myself, the city manager, and our chief of police. Um, that could be, and, oh, and Judy. So the four of us met together, we created a list of ordinance violations that we've been made aware of with what's happened to date, what the next steps are, and then.
Complaint driven.
Complaint, who's to do the follow-up, um, so that we can revisit that twice a week to begin with. We'll move to once a month if we're able to manage it as it takes shape. But we have situations where we have ordinances that need to be enforced, but the person hasn't been noticed publicly or with a certified letter. So we don't have really legal repercussion until that happens. There's just different aspects. We also have in our ordinances that we need to have three complaints and also written complaints. There's just aspects of our process that we need to dial back into and then have a follow-up mechanism, so that we actually are able to start managing our ordinance enforcement better. And I, I feel very hopeful about this process, just in that it isn't going to be where we hear about something and then we don't hear about it for a while, and then we hear about it again. We'll actually have clocks that start ticking on these, and we'll have the, uh, the ability to follow the processes that are in place for us to enforce ordinances. And we can give a report of those meetings. We can do it by email to the city council. Another recommendation that I made to the four of us that day is if two city council want to be involved, two of you could come to the meetings as well, if you wanna stay abreast of these and know what's going on there. But either way, if you want another meeting in your life or not, they'll probably be at eight o'clock in the morning every other Wednesday, and with the four of us. And then we'll send a report out after that meeting to the city council, so, and the administrative staff. So they'll, you all and the staff will be abreast of where we are in each one of these ordinance violations. And I think it will really help us a lot in terms of just managing our city and making it a better place to be. Um.
Can I clarify something with that, Mayor? When, when she mentions three or more complaints, what that, what we're really talking about is nuisance violations. And it, when it talks about nuisance in our code, it has to impact three or more persons. That way you don't just have one neighbor complaining about the other, saying they're ruining my life. Um, it has to impact multiple people. Um, we want it to be an official complaint on the record, so that we, we can, we can then start the enforcement process. In some enforcement. In some enforcement, it's not related to nuisances, or some nuisance violations don't necessarily have to impact three or more persons. If it impacts the city as a whole, it dramatically impacts property values, but from the chief's practical advice, we need more than just an anonymous person complaining on somebody else. 'Cause when you start talking property rights, you know, we, and, and you have a Fourth Amendment. You get, you know, we can't just go charging in and, and slapping misdemeanors on people. So if it's complaint driven, there's multiple complaints, it's something we can document, we can then, but, but to the mayor's point, we have a process. Okay, this is when they're noticed, this is what the next step is after, you know, we give them ten days, we give them a, a month or whatever, and then after that point, what's the next step, and so forth, so that we, so it doesn't just get, fall through the cracks. Um, and, um, anyways...
It's all ordinance driven, so, I mean, basically, we have, uh, the guidelines, we just need to, again, dial into those. Um, the next thing is, I went to the Outdoor Recreation Grant, um, workshop, um, I walked in the door and Nancy Dalton was there, so it was nice to sit with a friend. And we worked on some of the trails, things for Parowin specifically, Hidden Haven, it's just a mess and it's sad, and we're trying to figure out how to take care of that trail. And, um, some neat things came out of that meeting. There are a lot more resources now through that, um, group from the state, and one of them is you have access to a planner, and these services are all free. So you're able to get, you know, some help with plans on additional trail connections and things like that. Our community really would like to see better tra- trail connectivity, and there's funding for that and ways to do it, and the time is right, and we have people that wanna be involved and help. So that was a really productive meeting. It was there in Beaver. It was a series of like six, but that was the closest one to us, so that was the one I went to.
Mayor, I gotta jump in. I'm on the, I'm on the Patchwork Parkway, um, committee, which in Ha- Hidden Hills is...
Hidden Haven.
We're, Hidden Haven, we are part of the Patchwork Parkway, the, the Nat-, the National Scenic Highway that's designated and all that stuff. Um, Nancy has written a grant to start working on that, and it's through that, um, um, that Patchway, Patchwork Parkway.
Byway.
Byway, yeah, all that stuff. Um, Cleve was a signer on their checking account, and so I went with, um, Dutch, who's the other signer, and we got me put on the, the checking account. Nancy is the one that's, that's the program administrator, um, but she doesn't have any access to the, the checking account. So anyways, that's been updated and done, and, um, that committee is, is working on trying to help rehabilitate that. But it's, it's a state park, and all we can do is help, and at the end of the day, the state has to do it. But if there's not people there driving and pushing and pushing, they may just walk away from it, or they may wait for a long time. Meanwhile, you got people hiking it, getting hurt, 'cause it's a disaster, so anyways...
And, I mean, it's also inner-city trail connectivity and other, other opportunities for us, which when you think of inner-city trail connectivities, it's connecting all of our, where the sidewalk ends. Um, the next thing is just, um, we do have a groundwater management meeting, and I think we brought it up at a previous meeting, but I do wanna bring it up again at this one, because we won't have another council meeting before this meeting, and, um, did you wanna mention it, or do you? It's the one in, it's at the high school. So there was one at the beginning of the year, there wasn't enough seating for everyone that wanted to be there. This one might get even more attendance, because people are aware of our water situation. So just for you and on the record, it's on, it'll be in the newspaper as well. Um, January ninth, um, at Parowin High School in the auditorium, it's at six o'clock. Um, the purpose of the meeting is to discuss the development of a groundwater management plan for Parowin Valley. Personnel from the Division of Water Rights will be available to take all questions and comments provided by the general public and interested parties. Um, if you're unable to attend the meeting but would like to provide input, please send your written comments, and then there's a, an address. So I can have this posted probably to the city website, and probably to the city Facebook. But it is our opportunity, um, to come out and, as a community, voice our questions and concerns about the gra- groundwater management plan. Is there anything either one of you had to add to that?
Yeah, this is the, this will probably be the final public hearing on the draft plan before it becomes the official plan. Um, the state engineer has, has moved, which we asked them to do, on the dates of the curtailments, which is huge.
Yes.
We didn't even think they'd do it. Now, they're gonna require metering at points of diversion, including canal companies. The city's already metering everything, but it'll impact the canal companies, it'll impact Summit, it'll impact Paragona, it'll impact the farmers with their wells. They're gonna have to have them metered. That was the big trade-off. And that plan, I think, will probably get adopted, and, which is good, 'cause it exempts us from secondary metering.
Um, another thing, and I'm only bringing it up because my twenty-one-year-old brought it up, which he's not as aware of the world around him as I think he should be, but he noticed trees were coming off the mountain in certain places all through our county. And this came from the USDA, the Department of Agriculture, and it is talking about that there will be continued clearing of those trees. And just to kinda give you a, an idea of how much water those trees take, whether they're black and their bark is burnt, they still pull about a gallon of water a day, is that right, for each tree? And from a census perspective, um, we're supposed to have about, I think it was five trees per acre, and we have about five hundred trees per acre. So they are clearing the pinions, and it's gonna look like things are going on, but there is an opportunity, um, and I'll have this letter posted as well, to, um, voice your pinion support and things, um, but it's basically a notification letter, and it's to reduce the risk of uncharacteristic wildfire to key ecosystem components, including habitat and connectivity corridors, by modifying, reducing standing and downed fuel accumulation. So in case you wonder, standing and downed fuel accumulation are trees, in many cases dead and diseased. Um, in some cases, they're fine, but there's just so many. Um, so that is something else. Just be aware that you're gonna see clearing of areas on our mountains, and you'll notice it, 'cause it looks different. Um, the other thing that I wanted to bring up was, um, it was called the Santa Flight. It was pretty cool. I didn't know if you were gonna talk about it, but it is a once-in-a-lifetime deal, and I can tell you those twenty-four pilots, um, were amazing. It's filling, it's philanthropy at its best, it's been going on for a long, long time. And the stories, you know, that I heard from some of the pilots about what they've been able to do and with these schools and this program. But the neatest part is, I said, "The kids will never forget this." I mean, Santa landing in a plane, and the National Guard unloading, and all these pilots standing there, and Mrs. Claus was like, amazing. Um, she visited, I think, with a lot of the kids. Um, but at the end of that, uh, it was just said, the pilots said, "Well, this is something we'll never forget either." I mean, your community and these kids have just really made an impression on us. And of course, we had Rex Burton going, "Don't take the wrappers off your candy canes on the bus," you know? And it was just classic in so many ways, and it was neat to be there and, and watch that and to be part of that. A lot of our community was there, and, um, Officer Townsend was there, a lot of our administration. It was, it was just really neat to see that. Um, the other thing is, I have been trying to figure this out, and those of you who know me know that I kinda pit bull on things, yes?
Uh, Kina's on the internet, and Channel Two, and they have their stories, and they're able to split up. So just to let you guys know, they went out and our school was highlighted in a very good, good way. So, and we've been touring all day, and it's amazing, the amount of stuff that they've donated to our school that will go out to the students, and then I'll put it to the community on Monday.
Do you guys have any trouble with it?
I don't, neither do I.
I think that people that own the hangar did.
Do you guys need help? I know that I kinda saw like online that you guys were looking for help with like...
We, we did a ton today, a ton, we're waiting for one more plane to come in, and we'll have all this stuff, but I think, um, we're pretty good for volunteers tomorrow, so a couple bags, so it's all good.
Awesome.
Yeah, but it's really making for show, and that's amazing, for coming, um, to the office.
It was, I, it was amazing. I'm really glad that, that that happened for Parowin and for those kids. I really don't think any of them will ever forget. Um, and then the frisbee golf signs and maps did go up. Um, Billy and Stephen were able to take care of that, and so we do have a map and on, um, thisgolf.com, uh, way to see that, and everything turned out great. It looks really, really good. It's gonna be another fun little recreational amenity for the community, yeah, behind the, in the library park. Um, it's a really neat layout. I think it's gonna draw people into the sport. You can actually go into the visitor's center, and you can borrow frisbees and bring them back, and so I think it's gonna be something to get the kids outside and families doing things outside. That'll be really neat. I didn't know if Dan wanted to highlight how quick the roof repair happened this week.
I was just sitting here kicking myself for not saying that. The wind, um, as we know, was, did a lot of damage to the decorations, and Molly knows probably more than I, the, the work that was done to get them restored, um, some real unsung heroes there. But it also damaged our, um, the roof on the bathrooms, the, the, um, the shingles were taken up in quite a few places, I mean, in a, in a, along an area. And, um, I was in the middle of a meeting, I got a text that said, "Can we just fix this, or do you have to look at it?" And I said, "Hey, is the wood good underneath? That's the only thing I wanna know." And they said, "Wood looks great." And I said, "Fix it." And by the time I left, I ran to grab a drive-through burger, and I ran up to see him working on it, they were gone, and it was fixed. And it wasn't a small, um, um, surface area, so we got great Public Works guys. I wanna give kudos.
It was that Friday wind that we had.
Yeah.
All, all the, the balls blew off of our wreaths of the city's ornaments. I saved the ones that landed in my yard, and I was gonna take them in. I wonder if other people saved them, because I'm sure they can be reattached.
I was a little concerned that we may have a, you know, sometimes you'll get, the same wind will come through the sa- same spot, and it'll keep doing the same thing, but this is apparently a different place than we repaired the roof. So I don't know if this is necessarily gonna be repetitive. If it happens again, we look at a different type of roof, or we look at something more robust, but I'm pretty happy that they got a, on it immediately.
And I hope everyone recognized we were not out of power, that high wind.
Mm-hmm. I noticed.
Yeah.
Did everyone in the room notice, because I noticed. I was like, "Wow, that's awesome." I was really, really happy.
I was waiting for it.
Good job, power guys.
Yeah. Um, so at the beginning of, of the year, I found out about these, and I probably mentioned it in council, but I have a solution. I found, um, it at another city. But to have, um, like a red on one side and a green on the other, that you could hang on your door, that could be seen from the street, of "I'm okay" or "I'm not okay" kinda thing, just in case we did have an extended power outage, or we had anything catastrophic happen in our community. So I met with Chief Adams about it, um, once I learned about these. These are actually a little more than we'd need to do, but they're from Cottonwood Heights, and there's just four ribbons. They're called triage ribbons. In this case, there's a black, which is really too sad. Um, won't say what, you know, if someone in here has died, which I'm just like, not really sure that we need to do that. Um, maybe we do, we could decide. The red one is someone's injured, the green is that there's, um, everyone in here is okay, and the yellow is, um, we have medical problems, um, and some severe issues that, anyway. We could design them, but what Chief Adams recommendation, so a roll of four triage ribbons, it was a thousand square feet, which each one would need to be a foot, um, it's three hundred and fifty dollars. We have about fourteen hundred doors. I'm just calling it that, it could be a different number, but, so it's a pretty inexpensive project to enlist something in emergency public safety. His only recommendation was, you know, we'd probably be okay with green and red, and in that case, we could reduce our cost to about a hundred and fifty dollars. But these could be distributed either through like Rotary Connect, through the high school, or, you know, I don't know how many people are still doing Eagle programs for projects, but there was one at Santa Flight today who collected things as part of his Eagle. So there are still kids that are finding organized ways to complete that, and, uh, the other I, way to go is if, you know, uh, obviously, we could ask church organizations, but cutting, uh, four, four or two one-foot strips and putting a tag in with instructions, and I was gonna say to put a magnet or something, so it could be on the refrigerator, it's just top of mind awareness, so everyone in the house knows. If we really did have an emergency, we could alert, and Chief Adams thought it was a really inexpensive, really good solution for just, this would be catastrophic kinds of emergencies. But I even know, like, when we lost our power for that extended time, there were people that were in trouble, and if they didn't have connections, um, you know, it could've, it could've gotten really dangerous for them. So input on that, as we kinda look toward that, but I, I would love the community and council's support, because we just don't have anything that's that easy. And, you know, you can get a little deeper into it if we talk to George Coulson, we could do, you know, block, a block person who's in charge of checking your block, and that's not a hard thing to do either. So it's just a way to take care of each other, and I think it would be something that we could put into place pretty easily, very quickly, as early as the beginning of next year. Um, but that's it. I, you know, managing my notes has been tough tonight, but I think I got through almost everything. Um, everything's been going well, and I as well, I'm almost surprised you're still here. It's comfy in here. But Merry Christmas, and as with that, I'll pay, I'll entertain a motion to...
One thing, Mayor, first.
Oh, sure.
Oh. You guys, you can go.
Thank you.
Hey! Go away!
Oh, I move, we adjourn if you're at that point.
Hey, David, back at ya. See how it is sitting here?
(laughing).
But you can pitch, but you can't catch?
Well, did somebody move to adjourn?
No! Oh, back to sleep, David.
All right, I moved to adjourn.
No, I, the last question, Mayor. What is dark sky? You talked about it last night in the, the, uh, planning and zoning.
So I, I brought it up at the beginning of the year, um, and just thought, as we look forward to our ordinances, ones that are in place are ones that, you know, we are creating in some cases. And there are properties around town, I know for some of you, you probably don't notice, but I do, that are really brightly lit, um, and so we might think about that moving forward. But to get that designation in the state of Utah, I think there are only four other cities that have it, but you can look it up on, online, it's dark sky ordinance. Um, I can print it out and bring it to council for discussion, but it really isn't that hard, but then it kinda guides your ordinances to protect your night sky.
I mean, we got I-15, and if we put lights at our ballpark and light up our main street...
Yeah.
That dark sky is ten minutes up the canyon.
Yeah. It's just a way, like, when people light their houses, to light down instead of up, things like billboards to light down instead of up, those kinds of things. So it's something to think about. I know for people that come and visit here, they say they've never seen so many stars. So I think it's something we think about and talk about and figure out if it's something we'd like to pursue, because it's a long-term plan to kinda preserve that, that we probably take for granted.
(inaudible).
Yeah, we're lighting a PL. (laughing).
Knock it off, knock it off.
I like it.
Yeah, and I mean, the, the light in the ball fields isn't all night long, you know, there's, there's...
Yeah, but I-15 is.